For all of you that are joining us tonight, could please sign in at the voting.
We're signing.
But we've signed it. All right, I have seven o'clock and like to order the regular scheduled conference. Tuesday, September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. If you would all join me. Item number three, Zoom instructions, Larry. Yes, for the people on Zoom, if you would like to make a comment at the appropriate time, go ahead and raise your hand. And you do that by on the bottom of the screen of the toolbar is reaction. You just click that and click raise your hand. Also, please mute yourself if. If you want to join in too. So that's pretty much it. Right, thanks, Larry. Item number four, approval of the monthly report, the minutes from August fifteenth. You'll always see those as a great decision for corrections. If not, it may be approved. I certainly approve the minutes.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, if you can, five percent, I.
I.
Those same time. Item B, voucher register and warrant.
There were a few significant things on the voucher this month, one of them being a vehicle that the marshals are going to purchase that they were able to find in La Porte. Chris can talk about that if he's ever seen one, but I think he has a a longer presentation here in a minute. The second one would be the Jetter Post, which is split between the MBH fund and the sewer fund. And then the third would be the mint salt bill for the iPads, the tickets that were made in order to work out any teams, the phone in here, the computer accessory, so all things for the conference room.
Any questions for Jessica? Not any or anything I should go through?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For those same time, motion period. Item five, monthly report, a financial report.
For the general checking account that holds twenty-two funds, the month-to-date revenue for August was hundred three thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars and thirty-two cents. The dispersants was seventy-five thousand eight hundred twenty-six dollars and fifty cents with an ending balance of one million six hundred ten thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars and thirty-six cents. For the sewer fund, we had revenue of sixty-six thousand forty-four dollars and eighty-one cents with dispersment of fifty thousand two hundred seventy-eight dollars and eighteen cents with a balance of a hundred eighty thousand four hundred thirty-one dollars and thirteen cents.
All right, item B, the marshal report. For the month of August, clerk, please find your handle, ten reports, had three golf cart inspections, twenty-eight traffic for both contacts we made, four dinner and inspections. Sheriff's office handled no reports within the town. Clear Lake, we worked a total of a hundred eighty-one hours of road, twenty-three hours in the boat, a total of two hundred four hours and drove a total of seven hundred ninety-three miles. Part of the cases that the clerk, the police department handled, we had one domestic free agency assist for the sheriff's office Fremont PD. Two, two of the sheriff's office, one from Fremont PD. Had a property damage, a personal injury crash, harassment. Under secure premise and then a theft. Sheriff's office in the township had a personal injury crash, the domestic services, warrant service, a little per check. Up even in town, clearly, sheriff's office. Our areas of concern, last month, we got approved to buy the golf cart sign that we talked about to put up around, around town. What's that in here? By the time that approval came in, I made contact with our guy, made contact with the company, get those ordered. We got approved for fifteen hundred dollars. Cost was going to be one thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars and twelve cents. By the time we went to purchase that, the price increased up to one thousand seven hundred forty dollars and ninety-two cents due shipping. So if the town would still like to purchase those, I need a approval to get those purchased. I don't know if the shipping costs are going high, we going up again.
I would say two thousand to be safe. I don't want to see us getting a pickle again. I will make a motion to approve up to two thousand one hundred dollars. I will give ourselves a little bit buffer. And then obviously, if we do not need to use that, I'm gonna go back, I'm gonna have to use it all.
I will say that we were, the town received a donation last month, fifteen hundred from an anonymous donor for the golf, to go toward the golf cart signs.
So is the money in the, we have the additional amount of money to buy those.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same time, motion period.
The two thousand twenty-two Dodge Durango that was located over La Porte County is expected to be delivered tomorrow sometime around mid or so. Actually got approval to buy that back, I think, in March or April, up to forty-five thousand dollars. We were able to get that for thirty-six thousand, hundred twenty-six thousand. With that, we have got quote for the equipment and installation for that Dodge Durango. I think everybody got a packet of information. We got a few estimates from, one from cops here out of Longview City. And then the other estimate is from, you see, Christa Kleynax here in Angola. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to look over those estimates. For Christa and cops here, if you look at the, sort of the bottom of the sheet, Christa gave us a bit of seventeen thousand four hundred forty-five dollars and twenty cents. Cops here, he was a, a fifteen thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars with seventy-seven cents. To make you think to look at the difference on those two prices is that Christa does not sell camera system and or the body cameras that we're looking at buying, nor will they do the installation of the Incar camera or software that we need for those cameras. We could go out and get a second estimate for just the camera system and the body, body cameras. So if we want the route of Christa, it'll be an additional three thousand seven hundred forty-three dollars to get the camera system and the body lights. And then we would actually have to go out and find somebody else to install that equipment into the vehicle. So we're probably looking at, if we went with Christa, you're looking at probably closer to twenty twenty-two thousand, five hundred twenty-three thousand for equipment installation versus a cop gear, which includes the body cameras, the mic, or the Incar camera system and the installation of everything for fifteen nine forty-three. So my recommendation would be to go with cops gears with fifteen thousand. If you guys have any questions, I can answer that, or definitely when you did, did all the labor on this, you can answer the suit their questions.
It's cops here, a local company or a regional company.
They're out at one of these. And cops gear, correct me, correct me if I'm wrong, cops gear has done a lot of the different media qualities in our.
Cops gear does all the sheriff's departments, they did actually dark tunnel, they have now, they put that together. Maybe the, the local sheriff's departments in several towns, not the whole state of Indiana. Spire over in theory, or, sorry, from there, so, very relevant company. Indian River, probably.
Any questions from your council concerning that? I think we should be judicious with our partners. I think we've got at least a regional vendor that has a good reputation, has done good. So I would suggest, in my opinion, go with cops gear.
We're gonna run, we're gonna run into the same problem we did with the science. I think you're gonna go up as we basically said.
I don't believe so.
I don't believe so, well, he's, he gives the quote, that's the quote he has. Majority of the parts that we have on here, he hasn't seen. Because that's all he does is, is vehicle, updating lights, radios, or is trying to pay that for them. Also, I'm not saying we would run in there, I'm just taking these off the quote in a good way. But he has, he's in stock, so it's not something he's got.
How fast do you guys anticipate getting that down to Longview City after we take delivery?
That'll be something, as soon as we make delivery tomorrow, or, of it tomorrow, and depending on what gets approved tonight, definitely, we was actually gonna call tomorrow to get something scheduled for, for this thing to happen. So hopefully, we'll find out by tomorrow, like calls, or the timeframe of when we can actually take it to wherever and start against like, let's just. Hopefully, that's, knowing Josh, the cops gear, that's where we go. I guess this will probably be able to get it within probably a month or two of the the process. Usually, you can get a car done it, depending on how busy they are, within maybe a week or two weeks.
Yes, thank you guys for making it happen this year. When we have everything under. I'll go ahead and make a motion to go with cops gear. And we got a little bit of leeway, we're under budget with this board already, if I remember correctly. So just to cover concerns, say, up to seventeen, gives an extra thousand in case something would happen between now and those two months, maybe max, to get it done.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll say it.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For those same time, motion carries.
Next one, the graphics package for the vehicle, we've got a couple of, kind of looking at. You got all four of them.
If you just want to.
What's that?
If you just want to speak to them.
I know, kind of, kind of heavy to all four of them. And I'll tell you which one you kind of like the best. Want to go back to the previous one? So this is the one that most of the Duffys like the best, the black lettering on it. It's got the blue, the part of the blue stripe on it, kind of help represent that we're actually, are Clear Lake, we actually have a lake out here. Kind of coincided with the, with the lake, so, so that would be on both sides of the vehicle. There would be a detail on the back of the vehicle, it's a clear police. We're looking at going with Andy Stroh in Fremont, who stayed local with that. He was the one, one local that gave us enough to be on that. I think there was one for reflective package, a partial reflective and a non-reflective. We were looking at going at the reflective striping on the vehicle, and I think that would, Andy gives a quarter of a thousand dollars on that. Thoughts or questions on a striking package?
No comments, I'll make a motion. One thousand. The private package.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Further discussions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For the same time, motion carries.
Next, I know, more of a kind of a head up for you guys to start thinking about what we'd like to do. We had talked about keeping the Tahoe once we got Durango because of service. Thought of keeping that at Tahoe was wanting to have it as spare backup, the police department. Equipment that's in it, we're gonna leave the majority of it in there. The only thing that's coming out would be the radio system, radar system, the stand for the computer, and the printer that goes along with the computer stand and everything, and then the laptop itself. Vehicle, the other equipment we're gonna leave in there, that way if we needed a backup, the police department could be utilized for that. We're gonna take part of the striping off the Tahoe as well. Take off the part of this police department, and then that way, if Jessica or Jennifer or Sony Administrator, or somebody from the town, a guy needed to go or utilize the vehicle around town, sort of a personal vehicle, or if they needed to go to train somewhere, that vehicle could be utilized for that. We're gonna need to keep that vehicle for a little bit anyway, until we get the Dodge Durango outfitted anyhow. Whether or not you guys want to keep that vehicle and use it for that purpose, the other thing is the, to consider here the next month or two is where you want to keep that Tahoe at. Right now, there's not any room in the garage for it. I thought maybe we have it parked inside the small garage out here on the side of it. It's kind of getting a little bit, there's a parking area for it, but that's just something for you guys to take consideration and think about here in the next month or two, what, what you'd like to do with that. Nothing needs to be done tonight, I just something to think about. Next thing is the vote door, we're planning on removing the boat from the lake probably in the first week or two of October. We got like a marina and talked with them about storage of the boat for the winter time. I did get some estimates on that from the marina. First of all, if we decide to store the boat in the town garage like we normally do, for the marina to remove the lift, it's gonna be a hundred fifty-four dollars, and then for them to do a fuel and filter change, that'll be seventy-three dollars for a total of two hundred point seven dollars. Probably have to have that done sometime middle of October. Maybe before the next council meeting or shortly thereafter. If the boat is still to open up some room in the garage, if we store the boat at the marina, for them to remove the lift, do the service, the fuel, filter change on it, and then storage of it over the winter inside, that's gonna be a total of one thousand one hundred nineteen dollars for that to occur. So I just need your thoughts on what you'd like to see, where the boat should be stored at? And if you would like for it to be stored at the marina, then I would need approval for that, my expense for that to be done. If you're, if you want them to be stored in the garage here at the town hall, that hall was in my, the two hundred twenty-seven dollar hall was in my operation, so I can go there. Once something else done, then the marina operation for that then.
So one of the advantages of, I thought, is storing at the marina, Chris, was we didn't have to deconfigure the watercraft. Is that, and it was accessible any time of the year throughout the storage period. Whereas in our current state, it's not accessible. We'd have to reconfigure the boats.
Right, correct. Yes. Yeah, so once we put it in, if we keep it here, we could get the boat anytime out, even if it's a, till the lake freezes over. Obviously, we put it out to marina at some point in time, may or may not be on the marina.
I don't know, I, I asked if that was a condition of storage.
It depends on where they, where they have them. So they can't hear it to no better.
So we have to stick hands guarantee.
Correct.
So for the two twenty-sevens, that included the lift removal for your bit?
Yes, that would be the, in the oil change and then boat.
What do we think we should do? And I said, well, can't do any statement.
Yeah, certainly, the marina, there, there's closed hours.
You say not even to do his concrete?
I recommend that we destroy the boat here.
Other thoughts?
I can, George.
Dan?
Yeah, given the only motivation really changed, where we store it was to not have to deconfigure it and to also have the insurance that we gain access to it. Okay, Stan. I think that is all I got.
Do you have any update on the speed? Signs that are up there like you?
It's starting to. It's missing from them or?
No, as far as that, it seems that you're a whole area, something happened out there.
We're still getting, I mean, the one on the west side of Lakeview, I would, those numbers are still skewed because of the way the speed limit for fifty to twenty-five, it picks vehicles up as they're coming out around that curve, which is still fifty mile per hour. That's why that is higher in there. And then I still do send out there quite a bit in red traffic. I think, I sent a meeting online the other day, and I think, I know Mike myself, I've written almost, I think, close to sixty contacts out there on Lakeview, mostly for that area. So they are slowing down as they're coming out of the fifty into the twenty-five that side, they draw their attention, use blood value, I think it is effective where it's at, and I think we're just always gonna have that few numbers right there. I think east, the other side on Lakeview, the other side of I remember they actually, the traffic's actually pretty good on that side of it. Really, Lakeview, west side of town's the only one that has higher numbers. Look at all the other, that's, I think we're gonna talk about that a little bit later, but if you look at all that, all the other signs, all the traffic here at twenty-five. Twenty-five were below the average speed on all those, all those rooms, definitely, but.
Is there been any, I think there's a sign prior to the radar, prior to the radar picking up the, the traffic that indicates a reduced speed.
Yes, we put that.
Is there any way to put red lights on that?
I don't know. I got, to look at statue or to make it more. I don't think we put red lights on it.
Fremont has a red, blue, then there's cool though.
Yeah, that's true. You may, the only way to make it more visible, I think, definitely not the red lights, but you may be able to put like a yellow flashing light on that sign. Could be a possibility, which would have to be solar powered, solar powered, or we have to help replace the battery, kind of like the constructions on signs, stuff like that. There's, sometimes I have a tendency to come up missing. We have to take into account how many times we may or may not want to replace that light, so. But I don't know, I mean, that sign, but it can't be any bigger than what it is, or they tap you, so. But it really, I don't know, it's her, and I find it county property as well. Yeah, it is county property, the county doesn't have an agency to put a sign up there. So yeah, that would be the only way, maybe to draw more visibility that the speed does get reduced ahead, is to put a flashing light, the old flashing light on it.
Yeah. Yeah, in the radar program that we've deployed over the last couple of years, it's gotten us completely almost, clearly fully compliant situation, along with all of your marginal soft words to, you know, focus your energies on troubled spots. And it seems like in this particular spot, it's all about awareness. Once the red radar sign pops up, we see.
Yes.
Decelerating, so I'm trying to push the awareness back where they actually get it to the town.
I think, gotta know how or that sign is past those curves, but it's, I know it's west of this curve a little bit. That they're coming on, yeah, the reduced speed I had sign. They're on the southern city north.
Trying to think how far that is, it kind of measured it well.
Yeah.
It's, it's well over a hundred yards.
Do you want to see any suggestions of, like dancing, putting a yellow flashing light on it, so, how should we draw attention to that area?
I can bring some ideas, I just, I just thought that would be the next step.
Anything else for Chris?
Larry, if you can scroll back and forth, I think we can eliminate some of the paperwork here. If you can go up two slides.
Up two slides, yep, keep going up.
With the combination of the Clear Lake Police Department's summary and by hiding any of the fields for any of the action items that are listed for the different areas around the town of Clear Lake and town of Clear Lake. Keep scrolling down one more. And utilizing the white space at the top, I think we can eliminate Chris's standard Word document and now just use the monthly detail and the yearly summary moving forward, unless anybody has any concerns or issues with that. I think the, the first paper copy that would have been at the start of Chris's presentation. It's like fourteen. There we go. Basically, the information, all the information that's contained in there can be contained within the two reports that's a little bit easier to read and follow through for everybody, so moving forward, I think we just go ahead and make the switch permanent. If anybody's got any concerns.
Like, nothing else? Moving on, I don't see fire department report.
Okay, we have finally completed the entire spreadsheet, so we can now utilize a summary. So this is the first month that we've had a yearly summary up to date and be able to show. You can see, you can see that both the mutual assist, the town of Clear Lake, the township of Clear Lake are included in it as well. And if we go to the monthly report, the next stage, we can see here that we had one medical assist within the town of Clear Lake, one CO2 investigation, one fire alarm, one vehicle with injury. Within the Clear Lake Township, we had two medical assists and one vehicle with injury, accident with injury. So we had a total of four incidents for the town of Clear Lake and a regional pool of seven. The one question that I do have moving forward with this one is the mutual assists are all considered underneath the town of Clear Lake. And it's backfilled, so if we go up to the yearly. And you look at the yearly. We've got. Where, let's say, for example, the. Month of February, there were three total incidents in the town of Clear Lake. One mutual assist and three, uh, sorry. One mutual assist and then four within the Clear Lake Township. The total seven, but it's showing in Clear Lake the mutual, the mutual aids. So we can tweak the spreadsheet, so those mutual aids aren't included within the town of Clear Lake. Or we can leave them in there as we've all talked, it's, it's important to understand. When our fire department is doing mutual aids, should something major catastrophic here happen. We want the other fire departments in the area to be able to come out here and assist our fire department. So that's always the reason that it was included within the town of Clear Lake. But I'm looking for thoughts or comments from the council on if you would like to keep it. Contained within there or if we want to have the mutual assist be separated out.
I don't have a strong opinion either.
Vanessa? If I was silent speakers. Fair enough. Well, we have the new yearly report that will be. On the plate and then the detailed report.
Anything else for Brent? You need this?
No, that can be available on file if anybody would need to review it. That information will be captured within the, uh, monthly detail.
Any way to make up five days? Yes.
Thank you.
What do we know? I have to be, so I need to present straight to support, Larry.
Yeah, as far as I O Ps. Many residents, they're demoing the house and constructing a new home, uh, in the, the construction. Callous residents at seventy West Clear Lake Drive, um, they're installing, uh, install the new. I create driveway, did have an issue with the driveway being too high. Got a hold of the contractors and they're supposed to come out and, uh, work on fixing the height to the room. On that. Milton Residence at ten sixty two South Quarter Lake. Uh, installing a rail on top of the tanning wall or safety problem. Area Residence at seventy, seven, seven, three, two, South Quarter Lake Drive, um, they're installing a new greenhouse. Helm's at one eighty six West Clear Lake Drive, uh, replaced their driveway. Norton's, uh, applied for, uh, tearing down the garage demo at seven, seven, two, one, South Quarter Lake Drive. Reinhardt's. Um, replacing the driveway at five, five, two, East Quarter Lake Drive. Used. To a, at one thirty Better Drive. Three, we need a R P to remodel the home. Gaze at eighty eight West Clear Lake Drive, uh, replacing a jury fence. As far as the planning commission hearings, we do have one for the next meeting. At seventy, at fifty seven West Quarter Lake Drive, it's the back lots. Can you provide that, oh, that lot into two, um, billable, um, LA lots. Currently waiting for the survey and that will move. Planting issue is the member. Apparently don't have any VCA hearings. Uh, the U D O updates, all the pending changes have been through the town council and approved. Changes will go into effect, um, January first next year. As far as the, the digital copy, uh, can I see all the changes to the U D O that's in process? And also, um, we'll be updating the, the books. So any council members or anybody that has a U D O vote prepared and we'll get it updated to the new, new U D O. Uh, we also have two, uh, new proposed U D O changes that will be reviewed at the next planning commission. Our mission being on November first. As far as the Hughes, uh, home, uh, he has, um. Had a approved reconstruction plan through the instructional engineer that we use to evaluate the home. They repair the unsafe electrical hookup. That's been fixed by electrician. This week, you're coming in and we got a I O P that had been approved. And this project has a, um, a time frame right now, six months to get the house. Semi demolished and rebuilt and this week he was going into the county to get his permits, um, through the building.
Larry, just quickly back to the, uh, planning commission hearing, um, the case number, uh, twenty twenty two batch one. Uh, are there two lots there currently with grasses on it or?
Is this the empty lot?
Just an empty lot.
That one that recently sold, um, so.
Oh, okay.
It's the back, back lot.
I would, yeah.
It's large enough to, to make two legal.
Yeah, I know.
Any other questions for Larry? Thank you. Uh, item E superintendent report guy.
Uh, for time. Time we had, I had a hundred and ninety three point five hours, Denver had a hundred and eighty four hours. I issued one road cut permit, zero memo comment and one letter of non objection. Uh, sewer department, I had twenty seven locates, five alarm calls. I replaced one grinder. Repaired three. Um, we have nine grinders ready to go. They're all set up, we have fourteen that are still boxed. Average daily flow was sixty five, seven point six gallons per day. Uh, this has changed since I did my report. Uh, we did receive the pumps back on Friday from C E M. They finally got parts in that were not smashed. It literally took them less than a day to get them back in, so. But they did come in damaged twice. Uh, mileage for the sewer truck was four hundred twenty six miles. Street department summary, I have, I have estimates for patching, uh, the streets from all we had to repair check valves over the summer. And sewer truck mile or street truck mile, only four, it's three hundred mile miles.
Guy, the, uh, the pump that C, uh, C, uh, how many pumps? What are we talking about?
We had six up there, we received three back so far.
Thank you.
Other questions, Guy?
About, uh, other council member reports, Mr. President, to go first. We've invited a special guest as part of our council member reports. Isaac Lee is director of the Steubed County Economic Development. And I've asked him to come in, introduce himself and explain a little bit about what our economic council is working on on a daily basis. To help support the county as a whole, but not only the county. But the residents and property owners of Clear Lake. So with that, I will turn it over to Isaac and let him, uh, explain a little bit about the economic council. Thank you, Brett. Thank you, council and staff, that will get us, uh, the next ninety minutes is mine. I think I'll laugh. I did that in Orleans. So, but the community's been good, um, native of Northwest Ohio, don't hold that against me, I'm an Irish man. All my life, uh, so I, I feel better now. But been with Steuben County Economic Development Corporation since twenty sixteen. Uh, and live practically at nine oh three Southway, which is our office, uh, which we're rolling out a new co-working space, which I think will be beneficial for the whole county, including those. Individuals that, that live and work on your lake that could have another potential place for professional, um, environment, if you will. Um, also a fellow Laker, uh, third generation ownership on a property over at Whitmer Lake in McGrange. Again, don't hold that against me, I wasn't around when they bought it. Um, so as far as Steuben County Economic Development goes, uh, this is, I think, is my third time coming before this body in some way, shape or form in the six years. I've come more often, but honestly, but I've had great, uh, partnerships with folks that are going into my organization, including Brett. Who helped relay some of that information back. So I would always encourage, if you ever need me for anything, I'm a phone call away, literally, Brett forgot my, my cell phone number, so he can text me too. I'd be happy to share it. Um, with that being said, our office generally in any economic development corporation works and lives off of four major items. I did a presentation to you, uh, today, I'm not gonna go slide by slide, but I think would be helpful for some context. Uh, for you to kind of understand some of the stuff, watching why it matters to communities, all communities, the county as well as the town of Clear Lake. Uh, the four major areas and in really no particular order, but we do have, uh, some priorities depending on what we're working on. Business retention expansion, it's keeping what we got and keeping what we got happy. Making sure that our current employers are growing, not receding, uh, even today, they, uh, day and age. Unemployment rates with as low as point six percent during the lowest part of COVID, it was extremely difficult. Most of the employers were still looking for employees, uh, and most of those employees that they were looking for were still looking for housing. Uh, we work with employers across the county today, we're tracking about thirteen hundred open positions across the county, believe it or not. That represents about forty million in annual payroll and over a million dollars of seed funding that could be kept. So that might hit a little bit close to home. Most of the general fund made up of property taxes and seed funding. And we are the only organization that puts money back into your seed funding, by the way, we do. Uh, we can show that in a couple of your slides by basing it around the employment numbers as well as the average wage. Uh, wages, usually those, those are made, most of our employers have made aggressive wage adjustments. Uh, one, because they've had to, and two, it's, it's just the competitive environment. Uh, below four percent unemployment, which I was, when I brought, I was brought into the industry of economic development, I was told this before. It wasn't supposed to go below that, economists had told me that was wrong. It happens, but the, the things that happen below four percent are truly a different environment for the world that I live in, which is called economic development. A lot of the employer's problems now become our problems as a community. Housing, daycare, those types of things that generally just lie within the four walls of the employer. Become community problems that we need to address, address and finance. And that's part of the work that we do in the business retention expansion. Attraction, I'm still gonna go out and attract businesses. It doesn't pertain so much to the activities, the aggressive activities here within the town of Clear Lake. But it does when you're looking at the community as a whole, because of the businesses that we attract, we try to diversify the portfolio. In terms of the type of businesses that we get, but I'm not gonna shy too far away from the talents and the skillsets that our population provides. We make things and we make things very well. That's a key piece to what we do in Northeast Indiana specifically, Steuben County. So with that being said, that gives me a good core group of employers that I think go out and attract. Uh, one of those was kind of here before I got here, but we solidified the deal after the fact with Brightmark. Renewable, uh, plastics company that, that is really starting to move forward. You see them as you drive down sixty nine. Other organizations we look at, uh, Easyflow and Fremont, which has now changed their name a couple of times. And another employer in, in Gola called Passmaster, like I always get that wrong because I try to say it too fast. Um, but that company's really cool, actually. Uh, the product that they make is they assign the wheel or the rubber, if you will, or the tire and the hub assembly all in one process. And in most RV trailers or things that you would tow behind trucks or, or other, or SUVs. Uh, those wheels are not balanced in this process, it's an automated process that balances by the. Uh, first of its kind in the world, uh, so we're very happy to have corporations, companies like that. Um, so we do the attraction piece. Also, I will say attraction of talent becomes our major objective when you go below four percent unemployment. Okay, just remember, I first told you, we need to keep our current industries happy. The way of doing that is to increase population, increase workforce participation. And make sure that they have enough people at their offices or at their organizations to, to work on their big ass. Workforce development is pretty broad. Uh, how we do that is a couple of different facets, and if you've seen one economic development organization, you've seen one. Economic development organizations, but we all do things differently. I have two counties in the state. Every county's got one, regional corporations have one. Uh, and then you've got organizations that act like Lido, it's called regional chambers. Uh, so you, you've got a lot of us out there doing the work, but specific to our workforce development. It's not only training for the right skillsets that are desired today, but it's also making sure that that funnel's built in the future. I told you when I first started about the unemployment being so low. We had to really take a look, an aggressive look at what our skill system, like aid control systems are putting out. Uh, and we could identify about a hundred to a hundred and twenty students across the county that told their school systems, I'm graduating, but I'm not going anywhere and I don't know what I'm doing. That could have easily been a hundred to a hundred and twenty students working within our four walls over manufacturers, capturing a partial piece of that forty million payroll that we leave on the table right now. You don't, you know, for a couple of years. But we worked very aggressively to create a program called Manufacturing Academy, and it's in its second year, uh, second cohort this year. Um, and luckily it's a pairing of industry with students, a ten week trial period, probation period, if you will. Um, whereas with an individual that's tuning, will get a ten bucks an hour, I know that's not what they'll get out in industry, but they're learning the skillset and tricks. Along with a couple credentials through every tech. Um, and during these ten weeks, as they're being sponsored by the employer, it's the best ten week audition period that they'll ever have. And it's same for employer, plus for the employer is far, it costs far less. Cover that eighteen hundred dollar exposure than it does a traditional new hire for a few weeks. Although if that new hire even shows up, which I have talked to an employer today in Fremont. Had two new hire meetings today and both no show. So we still have that. Public, private partnerships, um, this is a broad one, this is actually the one I love to play the most, quite honestly. Because this is where a lot of the gratification, the work that we do in economic development, um, marries, uh, both public and private entities. We are a true five oh one C three nonprofit organization. We assume the county's name only to define our territory. And it's, it's not even really our territory, but at least our boundaries. We are a regional organization, I have to work across two state lines because that's where our labor shed comes from. Uh, three hundred and forty five thousand people are at our fingertips within forty five miles that are working, of working primates. So that's the territory that we cover. But in the nonprofit organization, that makes us very nimble. And in these public, private partnerships, it's the thing where we get an opportunity to work with our public and private entities to address some of the housing needs. Work on what those housing, uh, units might look like. Again, maybe not so much pertaining to Clear Lake, but for other parks, that's apartments, it's condos, it's townhomes. Uh, for other areas of the county, it's single use or single homes, si- uh, single dwellings, multi-use dwellings. Uh, so we did a housing strategy study right before COVID. And then launched the results during COVID, which was not the best time to do. Uh, but it didn't tell us anything we already didn't know. But what it did secure is some of the, it took away some of the risk by some of our private developers. That were holding them back from moving forward with those projects. Two projects come to mind, uh, fifty unit apartment complex called, at our enterprise point, right behind our building, uh, was brought online. And within a week that they opened, they were completely filled, uh, which we were told was gonna be capable in our environment. Uh, and we're working on another one, uh, actually two, which could potentially be three hundred to three hundred and fifty units across the county. Uh, if they go, both get approved. Neither one of those projects, matter if I call three of them, probably would have not happened without the housing strategy setting. All this goes, uh, in a long-winded way to the point that we as an organization are trying to protect the tax base, but also broaden it. And we look at things from different angles to make sure that the paths are being focused. So when I talk about seed it funding, my goal is not to take and not replenish, if you will. It's actually to provide more, and you've seen that over the last six years in the growth of seed funding. We've not asked for any more, our fee for service contract will remain the same for those six years, which you guys have approved and as well appointed an individual to our board. As long as I'm at the leadership, uh, uh, role that I, I, I am today. That will remain the same. Find my board and Brett will attest to this and find my board every year about this. We're going after the private sector side. We're actually a fairly young organization, by the way. We're only about ten years old. Uh, so it's kind of, we get all public and private partner, uh, partnerships at the same level financially to be able to do the things that we do. Another thing we're aggressively doing right now is coupling the work that you guys have done at your local levels across the whole county, including county as well as several other. Key stakeholders in terms of organizations, nonprofits, foundation, Cameron Hospital. Uh, we're entering a phase and going into a strategic planning process, but it's, it's going to be intentional and it's going to be inclusive. Not because we work well with organizations, but it needs to be inclusive with those that we also don't have a new existing relationship with. And the town will benefit from that. The town will be included in that, not just by Brett being on our board. I'll ask others to participate as well. Throughout this presentation, these, this document that you have the privilege to, I apologize, you can guess though, don't have the privilege to. Um, I'm proud of the work that I've done on behalf of the county and the organization. Uh, my eighteen-member board, uh, which represents not only nine public sector individuals, but also nine private sector. Individuals over the course of those six years. Our track record, our track record uh is pretty impressive. I'm approaching the mark of working on over uh ninety-one projects. Approaching the four mil, four hundred million dollar total investment uh in the county since twenty sixteen. Uh, retaining over eleven thousand jobs, again, protecting CEDF as well as creating almost eleven hundred during the same time. And keep in mind, COVID was two and a half years of that. So uh, it's, it's pretty impressive. Uh, one, one piece I also like to point out in this process. And again, the town of Clear Lake really doesn't have to deal with this, but when we look at projects. And we talk about what the communities can do from a local incentive standpoint. We're not giving away tax dollars. Matter of fact, it's tax dollars that we have yet to receive. Uh, in our tax abatement processes, we are leveraging for every public dollar incentivized in a project, thirty dollars in private sector investment. And that's far better than any of my other ten colleagues within the Northeast Indiana footprint. Uh, so I'm very proud of that, very competitive about that with my colleagues. Uh, they know that and we always try to compare uh our numbers and we do that. Um, some of the other things I want to make sure that I bring up, and Brett did a good job. Uh, we are working on. Uh, a co-working space, and actually, this is funny, I was telling Brett earlier today, uh, in our board meeting, that back in twenty twelve, we put a stake in the stands that we're going to develop a co-working space. That it turned into a space called the Enterprise Center. Uh, and with that being said, uh, the Enterprise Center did. A lot of work, a lot of good work for the time that it exists for about a period of two and a half years. We trained over a hundred and eighty people in the community, in the county. Uh, and new skillsets, primarily loan certifications and new certifications for CNC. Uh, some of those were fully funded, fully funded by our organization and grant funding, over a half a million dollars of grant funding tied to that initiative. Uh, that funneled through and around our office. But we have training providers in our community. Trying University is a great asset, IBTEC, I can go down the list of training providers that have done work within our county. That's not the space we needed to be in. If I told you out of the um industries that, that represent Stephen County. We have seventy-seven percent of those industries employ less than ten people per industry, would you believe me? Should. We are a ecosystem of entrepreneurs, LLCs and sole proprietors, some of which might be in this room today. I know one right here, that's because he remembers me from the fire. So with that being said, uh. The, the co-working space, uh, if, if you've heard that term before, again, it's like an economic development corporation. You've seen one co-working space, you've seen one co-working space. The difference with ours is really about, think of it, think of it like a gym membership. The more you put into it, the more you put out, or the more you get out of it. But at the same point, we're providing a professional environment. That you otherwise wouldn't necessarily have access to unless pre-COVID, you had four walls of brick and mortar. Post-COVID has taught us that we don't necessarily have to have those physical assets. But if you need a conference room, we have it. If you need a podcast area to be able to run a podcast, we have it. If you need a professional space to host a meeting for sales associates or potential clients, we have that. We have a space you can naturally collide with professionals, just like you or another professional area, lawyer, CPA, it's those types of things. Uh, that's what this environment's about. It's about keeping and growing our local entrepreneurs so that their businesses don't go elsewhere.
And maybe mention something about grants that may come available at some point in time to go support that as well.
Yeah, so we, this is a space that uh we need to do better job at doing. Uh, because there are plenty of money, plenty of money. Uh, all you have to do is look back to pay that for our budget. And see that there's plenty of money out there if you know how to apply. We as an organization, we need to do better job to put some resources into it. In terms of being able to successfully apply for EDA funding on a couple of different rounds, we received two seat, our regional cities initiative funding allotments for the Enterprise Center and the co-working space. Um, but this extends beyond our office. Now we're at a period where we want to help communities like yours. Also make sure that you're exposing, or excuse me, exposing every opportunity. Uh, to chase some grant funding if your projects are applicable. So whether that's USDA, whether that's EDA funding, federal EDA funding. Uh, we want to be able to take these projects along with the work that we're doing to be able to support the work that you're doing right here. Uh, so this is a new space for us. Uh, we, we wanted to do it, actually. I would say that it was in our conversations in twenty nineteen, but then again, COVID. Took control of a lot of stuff and we had to kind of pull back in and concentrate on a few things. But this is a space that our office uh really has some passion about because there's far too much federal state money out there that we're just not getting access to.
So if, if I may, um, I'd love to, I wanted Isaac to have the opportunity to give a, a broad, gross, broad. Bro picture of what the economic council does, but what I think is important for our residents, the property owners to understand is. With a strong economy. We are going to continue to receive, and if we can grow that economy, more revenue coming in that we can use for the things that we need. And the general fund. In addition to having services outside of necessarily an industrial area. That can be utilized by both, again, the residents and the property owners that are out here. So they're looking to make an impact in the community, to grow the community. If anybody has any questions over anything that Isaac has talked about tonight. Or you've got questions about the workspace, anything along those lines, please don't hesitate to reach out. And we'll get you the answers. So thank you very much for your time for coming in.
And we'll take any questions. I told you.
How long, how long has the, I mean, it's a second.
So this is a second year. Um, it was actually a conversation that we had back in seventeen. If anybody would have had the trying event that we had Dr. Andrew Mellon come in and give a presentation about the Pride Program. Uh, that's actually where this idea started. The Pride Program is a, it's a hell of a program, don't get me wrong. But it's a full inclusion from K through twelve process. And it's intense. And none of our school systems within the county, the four, including Prairie Heights, have implemented it entirely. Right? It's called the Work Ethics Certificate Program. Um. Elements of that were marrying with the fact that we were approaching, when we did a maiden student event, uh, our organization holds that every year around manufacturing, which in fact is coming up October seventh. We bring in about two hundred students across the county to meet with about twenty different employers. And it, the idea is not a, it's not a job fair by, by any means, but it's kind of that concept. The employer gets a chance to tell the student what they do on a global footprint and, and what they make. How it's important to the world. What this does for our K through twelve students is rather than driving by a vessel and saying, I know, I know somebody works there, or my uncle works there, or my, my mother or my grandma works there at some instances. Um, rather than just saying, that's where it stops, that's my knowledge of vessel. We've asked them to expand upon understanding what those companies actually do in hopes to, to gain some interest about working within the manufacturing. Because it's not what it used to be. I'm from a GM town originally. My grandfather worked in the lab and I can remember walking in at night and going to sleep here. We got a white coat on, left, and it was dark when he came back. So I know what it means to work in a manufacturer. Today, we have employers who are classified as manufacturing, where you can eat off their floor. I don't advise it. But you, you could literally eat off their floor. It's different when you talk to a student in the K through twelve system. For years, as a matter of fact, for decades, we've been telling this, this, this uh continuous. Uh, cycle of you gotta go to college, you gotta go to college. I'm not saying you don't. I myself have an MBA. What I'm saying is there's other alternatives along the way. It's like a train stop. You can get off, get some education. Get right back on and go further down the track. There's nothing stopping. So we had to change the narrative. One way to do that was through the maiden student event. Uh, maiden student event, which then dovetailed into Manufacturing Academy, which two years ago, we got C funding from the Deco Foundation and Don Woods Foundation. To run this program for three years. And it's kind of like build a plane as you're, as you're flying it. So we've, we've worked with, I think, about twenty-five students down the first two years, well, almost two years. So. Good question.
Well, I, I said on.
Williams County?
Yes.
Did you just do your?
Yes, we did.
So in another life, I was an athlete member and she was one of my students.
Nice. Anyway, um, they actually take school systems out and bus down to manufacturing sites.
That we're, we're getting there. When, when I got here, twenty sixteen, um, none of that, when you were manufacturing K through twelve existed. And like I said, twenty twenty. Everything stopped. Uh, because nobody was on it, school system, graphics, all of them shut down and did virtual for, for a long time. So we had to kind of hold off a little bit. Luckily, all that's coming back. So appreciate that. And don't steal all my ideas, by the way. Junior achievement's another good one. I actually was a former chair in five guys. But I have a thing of the name. Um, Brett's got all my contact information for those in the audience. Uh, that phone number at the bottom of that flyer will also reach me as well. Why, thank you for chatting.
The other council members, or something go through the metrics.
All the meetings for the council. The BVA and the pain commissioner were all boosted within the ten days.
As far as zoning, um. The month of August, we had six um IOPs issued and there were, there was, none of those IOPs were for the new ground.
I think that brings the total this for the last twelve months, forty-two IOPs, I counted right. Been a busy year.
As far as the average days to approve, once you, once you have all the information needed. Um, we've got down this movement over one, one day. A lot of that depends on how many you have during the month. Garage, of course, it'll have more.
And the, and the one metric that uh you didn't report on, but we're, we're taking is uh whether applicants supply all the information. And this is kind of trying to understand, you know, what drives uh the zoning administrators' efforts and where they spend their time. And we're about fifty percent right now of applicants that actually, but we range from zero to fifty percent. I saw that.
Yeah. Those have a better chance of going through this first time.
So you're investing a lot of energy upfront, the information you need to issue the permit. He reported, he reported on the balance, uh, average balance from up. You can see in the uh. Center lower section, the trend is coming back down. We did our peak in July. Of ninety-two, ninety thousand, almost, yeah, ninety thousand. So. Anything more you want to say here on this one?
I came to disappear. Come back.
So these two uh are under guy as well, he's taking a look at the average load rate over the summer months, which is where our spending usage is. And then uh for the annual. Like all, all three of these metrics, the guys you think is, is, we're going to make an attempt to uh combine those with the purchases of. And repairs of the sewer system. So that we can uh. Uh, have more of a predictive model. That we can uh be smarter about the parts that we're buying. And not get any shortage.
Um, so these are the radar signs that are posted around town. Got a total of eight of them up now. Look at the top left uh graph there, uh, the yellow line. That's uh likely drive going eastbound. That's where the skewed results come in at, because it picks up cars at the fifty mile per hour zone. Um, so they're still legally, they're going to speed them until they get to the twenty-five. Um, so that's why that line is outside that twenty-five mile per hour zone. But if you look at all the other seven. Uh, radar signs, the average speed on, on all those other locations are below twenty-five miles per hour of what vehicles are traveling. So that gets you a better idea that even though it looks like cars were going or flying down roads, I guess they're actually not. Um, like I said, like the eastbound is the, is the one that's skewed there, but everybody else is traveling below the supposed speed limit. Or that, uh, below twenty-five miles per hour. I tell one of them, that's always stands out to me, South Clear Lake Drive. Uh, the average speed on the, on South Clear Lake Drive is like eighteen miles an hour. Um, percentage uh or at or below twenty-five miles per hour by location, kind of like the percentage, again, Lakeview. Drive going eastbound, um, it's kind of towards the center of the graph there. Um, but everything else is out where it's supposed to be at in that the. Between eighty and a hundred percent of all the vehicles are at, at or below twenty-five miles per hour. Occasionally get somebody going through, well, well, the posted speed limit, but it's, it's not very common. Um, if we were actually to take that number instead of going at or below twenty-five miles per hour, and I went and took it to. At or below thirty miles per hour, um, pretty much every vehicle, uh, or the, or the average, I would say on that, um, you're looking at about ninety. Six to ninety percent of all vehicles currently are at thirty miles per hour or less. So. Majority of them again are at that average speed of below twenty-five, and then just that five miles an hour, twenty-five to thirty captures a, a good amount of the other vehicles. So. They definitely are doing their job up there. And then the graph below that number of vehicles a month, uh, per month, you're going to start seeing that number decline. Uh, as far as the amount of traffic, obviously, because uh summer months were in September already, so I'm guessing. Uh, it falls like it should, um, next month, September, those are going to start dropping off drastically for the amount of vehicles that we have traveling. Uh, Lakeview is the most traveled road. Um, that we have, um, both east and westbound, and then after that, um, it goes to uh East Clear Lake Drive for north and south, that's pretty consistent on another. So.
Thank you, Chris.
All right. Yeah, so I, uh, I, I received a number of questions uh with regards to how our five-year uh. Uh, road plan is developed and managed, so I could be opportunity uh to prepare a few slides. Um, on this uh topic. Um, first of all, I just want to uh make mention that the town actually contracts and outs. First of all, I just want to, uh, make mention that the town actually contracts an outside engineering firm. Uh, we've been doing that since, uh, 2017 to assess our roads. Make recommend a recommended necessary maintenance and repair actions. Uh, we, we initially started with Engineering Resources Incorporated back in 2017. Uh, and they worked with us through 2020, uh, and then in 2020, we changed to DLC. And they're apparently doing that service for us today. Uh, each engineering firm utilized, you know, a similar comprehensive approach to assess and trend road conditions. Um, a, a formal tool that's used is called pavement surface evaluation and rating. Rating, uh, it's P A S E R is the acronym. Uh, the system is, is used to categorize and track road segment conditions. It uses a scale from one to 10, uh, one being worst and ten being the best condition, i.e. a newly paved, uh, surface. Some of the distresses, particularly for asphalt, they have different, uh, categories for different surfaces. Are as being asphalt. Uh, they look at surface defects like rattling, flushing and polishing. Uh, surface deformations, uh, running, uh, distortion, including rippling and shoving, settling and frosty. Uh, cracks, uh, transfers, reflection, slippage, longitudinal block and alligator type cracks. And then patches and potholes. Uh, the scale also provides guidance on maintenance and repair alternatives. Uh, and they provide a trending of those Taser ratings, uh, so that they give an indication of rate of change in the condition of our roads year over year. The P A S E R rating scale is, is also a requirement by NDOT on our grant applications. Continuing, um, the engineering firms also, uh, work to identify the root causes for, for the degraded road conditions. Some examples of root causes would be poor drainage, amount of traffic, the weight of the, of the vehicular traffic on the roads, et cetera, uh, which lead to an acceleration of, of our roads degrading over time. Uh, the root causes, um, that are just mentioned lead to premature failure of a road if not addressed. At the time, the road segment is selected for improvement. So they're bringing not only, uh, helping us prioritize the roads that need improved, but part of that overall solution is to look at ways to, to make them survive longer, uh, have longer longevity. Uh, once they are approved. So, um, in addition to them doing the formal assessments and, uh, doing the root cause assessment, uh, they do consult with Guy, uh, or kind of Clear Lake Superintendent on the findings. And because Guy obviously drives the roads every day, he got, he can offer additional observations, uh, considerations that go into the, into the ultimate recommendation. The asset management plan is developed from the road assessment results. So the asset management plan is reviewed by the Indiana Local Technical Assistance Program, acronym LTAP. It's a nationwide system of technology transfer centers established by the Federal Highway Administration. And it's designed to improve transportation performance. Uh, for Indiana partners, uh, Indiana partners with the Purdue University to offer this technical assistance and it verifies compliance with, uh, NDOT requirements. Uh, it also provides, uh, the, uh, asset management plan, technical assistance and offers advice where information may be missing or lacking. So this is kind of a, a check, um, for, um, the comprehensive nature of our asset management plan, that we contract with DLC for. And then ultimately a subset of that asset management plan is the five-year road improvement plan, which, uh, we work as council members, uh, to, uh, support, uh, with, uh, uh, our tax dollar funding as well as, uh, application, approving applications for grants. Uh, this, uh, next sheet is, uh, a comprehensive list of all of the various segments of roads that make up, uh, the nine point nine miles, uh, that we currently categorize as those town roads. And if you look, um, towards the right side of this chart, you'll see the Taser ratings for 2017, 2018 at 2021. So again, we did not do a P A S E R rating, uh, for the years 2019 and 20, primarily with COVID and other, um, outside influences. But that's the trending, um, that's being looked at for our road systems. And then, uh, as I mentioned earlier, the lower the number, the worse the roads conditions. So maybe you probably can't read most of this, but anyway, I wanted to give an appreciation for the number, the, the data of the, uh, the analysis that goes into this, uh, the number of road segments and the trend. So that brings us to the five-year road improvement plan that we've been taking action against since 2018. Uh, I highlighted in blue those areas, uh, road segments that were completed to date. And then, uh, the highlights in yellow are the ones that we, uh, most recently, like last month approved at DLC to apply for grants, um, for. You'll notice that, uh, there's one white, um, white one called the, uh, the Lakeview Drive segment that did not get completed as of yet. And, uh, some of the, some of the delays in the targeted years were due to, uh, some beyond permitting type delays, COVID again. And then we had some weather delays last year that caused us to, to run a little bit behind on this five-year plan. I know, uh, you also note that, uh, our list is, is running dry. So Guy, I think this week was, uh, meeting with DLC Monday, yesterday I did. Great. And he's already picked off the process of creating the five-year plan for us. And then I provided some of the, uh, some pictorial examples, uh, that supported the recommendations, uh, for the grants that, uh, that we applied for. Uh, you can see here the, the surface deformations, cracks and, and potholes that are present on this section of road in quiet harbor. Uh, the next slide shows, uh, on West Clear Lake Drive, uh, some of the distresses in asphalt there and, uh, drainage issues, uh, along the side of the road. Uh, and also on the opposite end of West Clear Lake Drive between the, uh, Grand Lake Overpass, uh, up to Lakeview. Some of those, uh, distress points. And again, what really drives, um, the plan is the condition of the rain. And then, uh, once we decide on a priority scheme there, if there's root causes that need to be addressed at the same time, those, those estimates, uh, roll into the overall cost of the road, uh, segment being approved. So I hope this provides some good, uh, context and, and information as to how we, uh, put together our road improvement plans. Thanks.
Not a question, just a concern. I just received this plan. I and others have been asking for it since the first of September. And, uh, without going through the documentation, some emails, telephone calls, et cetera. Uh, this plan has never provided to me. And, uh, it comes up when we look at the budget this year, uh, and budget street numbers. And we're supposed to decide on a budget of four hundred and two thousand, getting ahead. But the four hundred and two thousand, the budget based on this document that has been kept away from at least, uh, several council members. Everybody seems to have had it. Uh, Dan, I, as you know, I asked you several times. You said you did it from there. You, after that, referred me to that mail. To get my information. So I'm supposed to decide on the, uh, grants and the budgets based on that map up until last Friday when I first received this. When did you guys get this? Who got this?
I just finished it over the weekend. And it was based on your.
So we, we made the decision.
You were one of the folks that I was responding to in preparing this information, hopefully be helpful.
Well, it seems like, um, it was floating around somewhere. DLC has, has put together estimates for grants. And I'm sure there's documentation that is out there. That would be very helpful for the council to decide on, uh, spending, on what job should be, uh, worked on, priorities of them. And, uh, this is what I got Friday after, uh, individual asked for it. And it seemed that way Friday. I don't, it doesn't give me much to work on.
Well, I hope you found it to be helpful and answers.
Well, yeah.
When you have a chance to look at.
Well, we, we went through it at the point, right? And it's confusing because, uh, one of the photos here on, on West Clear Lake, uh, looking east from seven hundred, where we live very near, uh, we cannot identify that piece of property anywhere in our block.
What was one of them?
The, uh, West Clear Lake, uh, looking east from seven hundred.
Yeah.
The photo on the right, if you give me an address, I'd appreciate it because we can't find it.
Yeah, that's in, uh, one, two, one, four area.
But be careful because the blackmail on the driveway.
If you have any other follow-up questions here, I think I'd be happy to answer those.
Well, like I said, I just, I would, to decide on, like, so we're getting ahead of ourselves on the budget, decide on the budget. It's going to take more than several photographs. And, uh, it's just quite perplexing as to decisions that we've made. And just by the way, the photographs have, uh, and I have three of them. The one on the wall has a total of five hundred and sixteen thousand. If you look at the fine print up in the upper right-hand corner, this is what I've referred to by you as of last week. Go get your information there.
I believe that my response was, I know that there was a map on the wall. See if that answered your question. And he said it did not. And so I, I worked hard all the rest of this together for you. As well as.
I, I don't want to get into the quote that I have here. Uh, map two is dated August 22nd. Uh, it, it went from two project on the wall to three project. With no cost on. And then in map three, which is related, uh, dated July 21st, has two projects and then handwritten in a third. So there's, my point is there's work that's been going in that I'm not aware of, but then I'm going to be asked to vote on spending.
So that form right there, I actually created and I handwritten it in because I couldn't get the gray thread out of it.
Okay, okay. And then on the back of it, there's a, a sum of dollars to the tune of a a million, three hundred and thirty-five, one million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand. So we've got numbers coming all over the place. And so how can we talk about a, a road plan with this confusion?
Those were the numbers that DLC gave at the meeting at the last.
Yep.
Those numbers didn't change.
So like I said, there's numbers here that I've referred to.
Which has two, two of them.
Yes, yep, yep. Which are different than the numbers DLC had.
Right, because those have been up there for several months, right? So the price inflation has changed since then.
Well.
But they have been available. I've had it in my office.
I've asked. Molly's asked.
For that map?
Bob's asked. And there's been none. Bob got me.
Yeah.
I didn't. So at any rate, there's just, I'm very, very uncomfortable with the, with the road plan, with the grants that, that we authorized last week. And I'll save my other comments till we get to the budget.
Okay. Well, I, I think that, uh, I appreciate the constructive feedback on the level of communication and pieces of this of the information. I think that's a reasonable criticism. And, uh, I hope that you found that this was at least a step in the right direction to try and resolve some of that. And if you have additional, uh, suggestions on how to improve, happy to hear.
Uh, well, this goes to inclusion and, and, uh, sharing information. Sharing agendas, sharing information.
We have to be careful with the open floor law, but Guy's always there, you know, he runs that department too. To share information.
I don't think, but what I want is to help you go about, uh, violation.
If several of you have the same conversation, it is.
In the point?
My point is that those two work on the road projects and if they're bringing in a third person in on that same conversation, it would violate the open floor law.
A single email goes along the way. Did you ever ask? Uh, Derek, uh, Dan did on my behalf.
Did you ever?
No, I did not. Have you ever called me?
I didn't know you were looking for it.
Well, Dan did.
I mean, if you go back.
Yeah, that's funny. And this is the first that I thought on Friday. And I've asked and others have asked, and here we are.
Didn't ask me.
Excuse me.
I mean, it's, it's hard for me to provide information if you don't ask the question.
The next time I'll ask the entire board.
Well, you're talking about inclusion. Was I included in anything?
No, you weren't. Now, thanks for my standpoint. I, I've been, I apologize for being so long.
Didn't say you were wrong. All I said is, if you needed information, why, why didn't you come to me?
I've been going to Dan. He's vice president. He's on the executive committee.
He's not vice president.
I'm his vice president. But I am, I am.
I'm glad.
All right, now to the front. Move to unfinished business. Item A, ARP project.
Okay, by means of introduction reminder, uh, ARP on the. ARP monies, the town has received the total amount of seventy-seven thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars seventy-four cents. At the August council regular session, I presented two suggested infrastructure projects. Council had previously selected infrastructure as the focus point for those monies. And we are under a commitment to have those, those products committed to before year end. So in August, I presented two recommendations. This is a reminder, some of the selection criteria was that the funds would be used on projects that would have a recurring benefit to the town. And the first of those two was a implement purchase and implementation of a GIS system that both the superintendent departments, streets, roads and sewer, as well as the zoning administration departments could use on a daily basis to make their job more efficient and therefore the recurring benefit to the town. And tonight, I think tonight, we would like to review the details surrounding the GIS system and the quotes that we received. And I'm going to make a decision as to whether or not to move forward on the GIS project. And I'll turn it over to Derek to describe that.
Well, we discussed last meeting, we get to help with GIS systems, the one that we prefer is the one that our GIS, which is a probably the most viewed system by a survey or contract crew that does anything with civil engineering. That the beacon, I explained down at the bottom that it had RGIS on there. The quote then came in from a company called GS Landmark, just under sixteen thousand. And that would get us all the equipment, that would get all of our grinders put onto GIS. That would take the beacon property and overlay it into a layer so that we could provide the electronic map to place that one up there, which by law we have to have. Basically, it's, it's kind of the state of the art GIS system. And just tonight, when we, for a meeting, we had a sidebar with Guy on some of the stuff that he saw on our tour system. And if the elements were GIS, we would know exactly where they are. Taking a guess, if somebody tries to take a photograph, they need to try to find something that still don't know where it's at. Yeah. So the intent is to create the system and, you know, I can't read through the history, but this company will come in and, like I say, grab all of the grinders, stores that are around, lay it onto a layer. Any new house that's built or any houses remodeled, we did GIS, basically the line, the electrical line, anything and everything. Because twenty years down the road, let's face it, we can't remember where we put it. We can get a quote.
Part of the problem is they've actually moved, part of the actually moved the road. So we don't know exactly how far they moved this, we don't know what the measurements actually are.
With this GIS system, it's what they call sub-meter. So basically, you have a very accurate point where you're saying, we can do this with anything we want to. Roads and drainage. And speaking of the roads, we pay DLZ or ER back in the day. Every time we repave a road, we have them do an engineering study. And that space of roads, still the same road. And that charge is somewhere between seven and ten thousand dollars just for that engineering. With this RGIS, we could add that information and just give it back to them and say, this is the road. Start here, save some money doing that. So long story short, I think the twenty, asking for twenty thousand just for incidentals using that for the ARP funds.
Did you say that the existing layers that are in GIS that the county uses, we can probably automatically roll over into it, like the drainage that the county has?
Any, anything that they have on the beacon and the transit. Another question?
That would be a total of thirty-six, thirty-six thousand. But of course, this. Don't mean to make much.
One, one more question. What's the timeline that?
He's actually, GIS is actually doing something in Congress right now.
We had a plan for starting this year, George. Or during that year. Build available various layers.
And last question for the residents that are here, when this happens, the two that, this gets passed tonight, that will put people on the roads, marking grinders and, and so there'll be workers.
They don't physically have to mark them, but they will be there without.
With a pole and, and markings.
Any other questions? Guy?
That's not a question. What's that? Motion to open it to the public?
Right, I have a question. Second?
I'll second.
Motion in a second, although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Same time?
Okay, same. We carried round eleven ten quite like side, but will the data from this be available on the new website for residents to view?
I think you can do that with like a PDF viewer or something to that effect. I mean, it'd be kind of like the beacon is or suburban county, then you can get on there and look at it. Yeah.
You can't edit it, but you can view it. Right, yeah, great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Questions, I make a motion to close to the public?
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Although in favor, they can buy up a ten aye?
Aye, aye.
Same time? Dan?
So I would make a, make a motion for the purchase and development of the landmark GIS system for a total of thirty-six thousand dollars of ARP funds.
Have a motion, have a second?
This is Brent, I'll second that.
Motion in a second. The other question? Although in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Both same time, motion carries.
The second project had to do with town hall upgrades. We do not have, Guy is still working those estimates, so I'm not, not prepared tonight. More information in regards to that project, but expect to next month.
Yeah, there are never.
Oh, not the, that's not all. Yeah, that's not, that's not the way to get everything together. Yeah, there'll be individual quotes for each of the various. Theory. So this is a reminder, we were looking at insulation, face barrier, windows. We were looking at the separation of the conference room, which has, is part of a shared HVAC system and the cold control. Making modifications there. We did, we did understand and learn that we had originally described a backup generator even for the town hall. But the, the primary generator or the lift station is as part, has a has a feeder line to the town hall. So the scope of that effort has reduced since we were last together. And then it would just take some electrical changes in our box to power the rest of the hall from that backup generator. And then we had, we were assessing the need for a secondary backup some time to protect us from flooding and possibly some perimeter tiling around the town hall. So again, all of those would be recurring benefits to the town through lower utility costs and also being able to have full operations during power outages. And pretty much mitigate damage due to parts that we experience. And again, Guy is pulling those estimates. We'll say that for next month.
It's still on the list, are windows and insulation?
They won't replace.
So they don't think off the list of the generator?
We modified the scope of the generator. It's not a backup generator, but it would require like for animal. Or fully obliterate the incoming power.
The insulation may be pulled out there doing, they were checking to see if by putting house trap and fan board on would take care of what the problems were we were, we are having.
And what were those problems?
Jessica and I during the winter freeze to death in our offices. And you can, if you were standing thirty feet away from the building, I can hear absolutely every word you're saying outside, sitting in my office.
Right, moving on, updated second quarter objectives.
And I've got the spreadsheet. I don't think we have that displayed, so I'll just kind of go through the best. And if there aren't, if there aren't updates, just that's the council folks. Say no updates, and if there are, we can put summary. So, definitely number one, I will say in summary, we've got that's the last time we talked about these, we moved to the completed number from four to nine. In process has dropped from twenty-four to eighteen. We've got one on hold and as of my attention, I agree, still at four. Yes, we started, so it's kind of early. Number one was to set options for class on Roberts who worked or conduct six sixty-five of the door law procedure for all incoming council, land commission easy members, led by Molly and George.
No, it'd be this time.
Next one was update town electronics. And this one, all was mine, all remaining items were defeated since the last, last time they established this, that being iPads were deployed in meetings, transition to Zoom and digital phones installed. And so this objective is now complete. Number three, print current sewer has built documentation, was evaluating the GIS system. So I think it's fair to say as of tonight, this must have sleep. Made a decision to move forward and that we're executing. You okay with closing this?
I'm told we could, you know.
Okay. All right. Number four, identify all sewer grinders without electrical disconnects and prepare a plan and begin installation of electrical disconnects. This guy, any updates there?
We are still sorting through figuring out exactly which ones are a hundred percent powered from the home, which one are not. Over the years, things didn't get real bound and entered in, so now it's down to physically going opening each individual box to make sure they're powered. That way, we ran into one today that we couldn't figure out where it was powered from and they powered it from a ground pedestal. Instead of running it up the pole.
So this is addressing a safety issue for those wondering, I will. Number five, award new sanitation contracts. This one is mine. I have now collected all the information necessary for updating the bid documents. I had a slight delay over what my original plan was due to the search for some new zoning administrator. But I'm still on track for completing this by December and a December award. So. Number six is update current maintenance facility to address superintendent concerns. We placed this one on hold last month, so that's the update on that one. Number seven, down select from twenty twenty-one draft infrastructure projects and ARP projects. So that one's obviously still in the process and I look forward with the GIS project and we're still collecting quotes for the post town hall upgrades. Number eight, develop sewer performance metrics and begin tracking. Kind of touched on that already. We've got the tracking metrics in place and I have full, all of the appropriations reports for the last eighteen months and we'll begin looking at those against the metrics. Number ten, document zoning administration process and begin developing procedures. This one's Larry. Is this one just going to be transitioned to the new GIA?
Sounds like a good one.
Next one, establish a manageable map under the control of land commission. This one's tied to the GIS. This will be one of the layers that are, are put in place for that. So that's the update there. Twelve, implement voice keystone software for time card and work orders. Give me an update on that, just.
We did away with time card and the Keystone work orders has been implemented. We're still pushing for more usage of it, but it is being used.
So would you recommend this one be closed at this point?
Yeah.
Reorganize town historical files, Jessica?
That one Molly and I put on hold until next quarter.
Okay. Purchase new Marcos vehicle. So we heard tonight that that one to, so closed, it includes the equipment. Yeah. Implement officer body camera system. So that we purchase that equipment package. Great. Place with a big radar signs, that one's closed. We installed two new ones this year, West Clear Lake Drive and outer drive. Eighteen, confirm water truck dock and parking space and the backup plan.
We did reach out to, brief up, we did reach out to the Quilley Marina. They expressed some hesitation on having it there out of respect to the busy season. Going to try to let the boats, lifts and everything get out of the. Going to try to let the boats lifts and everything get out of the water and reengage with the marina to find out exactly what those hesitations are, that there are solutions that maybe at hand that can be presented to them where they would feel more favorable to having the police there.
Twenty, identify development report of safety metrics. Council needs, I have that list complete with two completed spreadsheets. Establish communications now each department employee implement in twenty twenty three. This one's right now tied to the webpage updates that are being worked on with Molly and George in there. So that was the update I had. Are you okay with this? Sorry, lost my place. Identify a list of success criteria for Clear Lake Township to prepare for future free wildfire territory.
Said it would be in process for back end. Awesome.
That was one that we hadn't started, so it's. Be precise.
Or I have twenty twenty three. We have a new ordinance written and presented to legal. There's still waiting. I don't think we've heard back from them yet. So the Hawks will need to respond back before we can afford.
Twenty four, update is necessarily going to be developed ordinance. And comprehensive plan. So as Larry reported, we have completely, we've processed all of the backlog of the changes. And so that's, that's current status there. That additional two is he reported. Twenty five, source the unsafe building ordinance and or nuisance regulations to think about unsafe structures. We've got the order is in place and we're monitoring progress. Larry reported on that this evening, so I am in favor of calling this closed since we're just monitoring progress. Twenty six, complete a plan and restructure economic development organs to include grants for current businesses and make your good career.
We did see tentative entries from some of the local municipalities or businesses, excuse me, some local businesses. So we will need to discuss that further as a council on how we approach that.
Develop a drainage improvement plan from these guys. This one's really tied to that, which is complete update to five year road improvement plan and identifying secure associated grants. Guy reported that he's working on the next five years and as we've discussed, council approved last in August, the crossroad grant projects for twenty twenty three. Twenty nine, identify opportunities to partner with Clear Lake Township Land Conservancy. I've had some collaborations along the lines of including them in a graphic in the town hall on some of the key contributions that the conservancy makes to the, to our overall quality of life. In addition to that, we've talked about holding some structured quarterly kinds of discussions starting next year to do this to improve communications between the various organizations. Thirty, develop the conflict of interest process for the town council, land commission, P C A and employees. Just today, I saw an email from the land commission attorney that was providing some recommendations so those that can receive. Start taking all the. Last one, thirty two, propose a more comprehensive six pay policy like what the town had at twenty nineteen for twenty twenty three. And it's just, you're just pointing to pick off some discussions.
Yeah, no update yet. We're gonna, I think, work on that with the salary ordinance for next year.
Good work everybody. Question for comments?
Moving on, I haven't said, I'm doing this public hearing for the budget. Email Jessica, Brent?
I'd like to start to lead us off with a few takeaways that we've noticed. While going through this process, we had several meetings, including those with outside consultant. And all budget procedures were followed correctly. Public notice was given ten days prior to the public hearing. Public and adoption meetings are at least ten days apart, adopting no later than November first, which is the reason why we have the first meeting now. And we are the first introduction now, and we will have a follow up at the next council. All property taxes are within their statutory limits. Adopted levies do not exceed the maximum levy. All budgets are fundable by the available revenue and cash. Checking for a positive estimated cash balance, operating balance for the ensuing year. All funds reoccurring expenses are balanced. All funds, all funded budget ceilings enable council action on infrastructure projects and objectives. Note, these public figures are not necessarily the most accurate representation of what council intends to spend for the upcoming year. The CCD, LRS, and economic development funds reoccurring revenue of one hundred eighty eight K. That's a one fifty four plus ten K plus twenty four K supports the annual two hundred or seven hundred and fifty two K and the crossroad grants. Undes- undesired amounts total are undesigned amounts total, one hundred eighty four K, one hundred and twenty nine for the CCD plus fifty five for the rainy day. However, ordinance limits are transfers to ten percent of the budget, one hundred and twenty seven K when they are added to the rainy day fund balance is sixty five K. Results in one hundred and ninety two K or seventeen percent reserve exceeding the fifteen percent figure.
Thanks. Thank you for your overview, Brent. Jessica, would you like to add anything?
We just worked really, really hard. We did meet with each department, looked at their wish lists. Not everybody got what they wanted. I know something I had been wanting the four years that I've been here, we still were not able to see, but hopefully we kind of came up with a solution that will be on salary ordinance for the future, for the employees and anybody that's full time. So hopefully that will work itself out.
And I'd like to also stress one point that we have in here, that there are several things that are budgeted for that have been talked about throughout this year and previous years.
Yeah.
That have been in the works. And we're budgeting for these because we have to have the funds appropriated should we report with them. However, that does not mean that those projects are approved by council to move forward. There are going to be several steps for the large ones that will come before council next year. And council will have to approve those before those monies can be spent.
So I think it's appropriate to, council has had the various detailed worksheets provided to them. So questions, answers created.
Well, when Brent was speaking the numbers, I saw quite a few eyes rolling up in their heads to try to focus on just what, what those numbers really meant. So yes, I'd like to just boil it down to basics. What is the town's total expenditure in the budgeted year twenty three?
You're wanting to know the total amount that the town is spending?
Yes.
So that would have been on this form right here that you got?
Okay.
Okay? Were you able to look at it?
What was the percent of increase over the prior year?
Percent of increase on what? We have to understand that then we also received what's that five percent? No, growth rate. I'm sorry. It's a five percent growth rate this year. So I'm sure most of you, I'm sorry. Most of the property owners here would have gotten notified from the county because we do not set your county taxes that would have been given to you several months, May, April, where you have so much time to dispute your property value. We do not set your property value here. So since other properties around even Stube County have been selling at a, obviously a higher dollar amount, that increased your value. So then that gives us a little bit more money as far as what we would see, receive from the town. Because your tax rate, right? Your tax is going to change because instead of on maybe three hundred thousand two years ago and your values were four or five hundred now, that means your tax rate is twenty days off your value for next year. Not your value this year, not your value the year before. So there's different values that change every year.
That wasn't my question. My question was from this year's expense. The million two seventy, million two hundred and seventy eight thousand twenty dollars.
How much are we betting this year between last year?
What is the increase?
I didn't, I didn't bring this last year's budget with me. It's certainly a question I could have answered for you if you had wanted to ask me outside of here, but I did not prepare last year's.
We're carrying up for a public hearing and I suspect there are, I see several CPAs in the audience and some MBAs and quite a few entrepreneurs that run businesses. Certainly, when we look at budgets, one of the things you do is compare this year to last year. How are we doing?
I've never done that in the government, I believe.
The, the increase over prior year is sixteen point five percent. The increase from twenty two, from twenty one to twenty two, a year ago, prior year, was twenty four point six percent. And if you combine the two year running rate, our expenses have been increased forty five point six percent. To me, that's an alarming rate.
Is that, are you, are you speaking, has it increased?
Yes.
Year over year or the expenses?
Well, the expenses for the budget.
So you've looked at the actual expenses. Those numbers are actual?
I look at appropriations report, which for all practical purposes is a forecast. Comparing it to the budget and I've done the comparison line by line. And the bottom line is for this year, a sixteen point five percent increase. And I might footnote that the monies you're talking about is only forty one percent of what this town spent. We still haven't talked about sanitation more to it. And there are salaries and wages that go over to those. So, you know, we have a significant increase of sixteen point five percent this year, the last two years, the forty five point six percent. And that running rate isn't sustainable.
So how are you supposed with inflation being at nine point eight percent right now? Then the town is supposed to function, not, not just with inflation, but these other things that we are now offering in order to be able to communicate more, right? You've been a part of passing of that. So how do you, how do you feel that the town is going to continue these services that people one have wanted, two have asked for, and that three, you've been a part of passing?
Well, I don't know what my part of passing historically has to do with twenty twenty three. I've not had any in the future.
Well, you've passed services like Zoom, like Rachel Alert, like adding that on. I guess you weren't here for the fix officer, but these things cost money.
How much is?
A couple hundred dollars.
I don't think that's.
It's still adding to the bottom line.
Well, I, I, I think we have to take a step back and certainly look at our spending and see where those increases are and see what we can do to minimize. I guess the question, you know, what are we doing to contain our costs? We've asked the employees what they want. But what are we doing to contain it? What, what insights have we looked at? To how we can reduce our cost of operations here, like any business.
I think Darren gave a prime example earlier, George. The opportunity to save seven to ten thousand dollars every time that you look into roads, every time that we look into that, I'd say that's cost savings. Well, I think you also have to take, let us like a second as well. You've expressed your concerns. We have had two years where we've had no road work essentially going around. I know I'm skipping a little bit ahead of here, but I do believe that it's important to maintain the road structure around. And again, back to my point earlier, when this budget was developed, this budget is developed to balance. This budget is not developed. All of those funds necessarily need to be spent. Back to my earlier point, there are going to be several things that will be going across council in twenty twenty three that will need to be approved, which is similar to what Jessica just referenced here, where we were approving things as twenty twenty two went along. The same thing is going to occur in twenty twenty three. So while you look at the budget and you're saying it's a sixteen percent increase right now, there are going to be things that council will be voting on to approve that can affect that sixteen percent increase.
I totally understand that and I've yet to see council vote against a recommendation. If, if we have excess cash that we don't spend for the budget, then we go to the rainy day fund, correct?
Ten percent.
And how much have we funded the rainy day fund in the last several years, other than the eighty five thousand dollars reimbursement from, I believe, the sewer fund?
We haven't, but, but it's not like we spent every penny either. It's just rolled back into the cash balance of the fund.
Of the general fund.
Of the general fund of the CCD, we have been done all.
So, you know, that's certainly the expenditures of the concern is sixteen point five percent. If you need to look at our, at our cost of operations. Another, another concern is the sanitation of sewer budget. That is, the sewer sanitation is fifty nine percent of what this organization spends, but yet we're not looking at it today. Is there a sewer budget?
There's no official sewer budget.
And it's fifty nine percent of our operation. We have no budget, so we just do it.
No, that is not true. Like what I know first base on prior years.
Definitely, we, you know, so point of order is we're not, we're not here to discuss.
So point of order is we're not, we're not here to discuss sewer. We are here to discuss. The uh. Buses and which tax levels of the community. Now, so I would like to, I would like to defer the discussion on sewers.
And I, and I accept that and I think we need to put it on a future agenda or have a sewer. Committee.
Yeah, we have a council makes up the sewer board. I would, I would recommend that you just reread the CPA's analysis that set up those rates.
And I hate that.
Have all of those be. So, so bringing it back to the budget, is there an action or?
Why, why propose that we, we work to decrease? The total expenditures from a sixteen percent. Increase fifteen point five. To something more in line of a nine percent, about eighty-two thousand that we go in. See how we can remove that from our spending and where are we left to? Well, I would like to have a work session to do that. We may, we have certainly residents here that they have inputs as to how we can. Adjust spending. But I don't think tonight, uh, and at nine, we're going to sit here and go, I'm glad I go through it line by line.
And that's.
Okay. Well, you start. Right off the bat. Uh, I will say that uh, salaries and wages are reflecting a six percent increase. Now there's dollars that have moved around. We have. A. Two hundred and twenty-five percent increase in the general fund and professional service. That is. An increase. That's, that's eight thousand, that's not a significant number. Uh, in motor vehicle and highway professional services are an increase of seventy-eight thousand. Is there an action on the general fund? Let me get to the, please. Are you spending?
Are you still, are you still on the general fund?
Yeah, I'm just trying to do something that we consider.
In the uh, professional services. In the motor vehicle, professional services. Add up to a hundred and thirteen thousand. Which is a seventy percent increase, excuse me, seventy-eight thousand dollar increase over the prior year. Uh, I would start with a reduction of street repairs of sixty thousand. But this is, yes, the MVH. Zero seven zero eight. Professional services, street repairs. Strike that from the budget.
What was the value, George? Sixty thousand?
Sixty thousand.
All right, so this would uh, impair our ability to um. Or the grants, get grants from the crossroads.
Uh, we would, we would still have uh. Three hundred and twenty thousand to the grants.
Where do you find the three hundred and twenty thousand?
Because it's left over in the streets.
The sixty thousand was earmarked to support uh, if council would like to pursue any of the road. Crossroad grants were approved. Last month, approved.
Well, to be submitted, not, not grants.
So this being delivered, the sixty thousand, which is part of that, yes, is a part of that funding.
We have to reduce costs somewhere. And I've got a defensive position on every line in here.
The, the control of cost is by council in their considerations on spending. It's not in the budget process. The budget process uh, needs to enable us to do our jobs. I, and our goal is to control the spending, to your point. Uh, and there are, there are targets in the budget that are purely optional. Uh, and we should, we should hold those very tight for emergency purposes. I think it's part of your point.
Yeah, but I, I totally understand that. But two things come to mind. One, I'll repeat, the other. New. Uh, we have yet to say no to spending item at this council table, as long as I've been here. Everything has been yes. The telling point is the fact that we. As the joke goes, as a good government, we spend everything we have. That's what we've been doing. We have yet, in the last several years, taken any extra cash that we haven't spent to the rainy day fund. As a matter of fact, the concern is we're robbing the rainy day fund. We're robbing the major moves fund. Our cash balance is going down. And that is another alarming fact. So we've got to start with the cost. Decrease the cost of this operation. And then we may have an ability to save the rainy day, save the major move. And build a little cash for that day. Lord forbid, when the recession hits and our sets of valuations go down and we are short on cash.
And tell me what, what amount of cash is that with cash?
Well, it's um.
Because right now we've got over almost twenty percent in this budget, this cash.
Well, two, uh, three things. Uh, one, the rainy day fund is this year, excuse me. Uh, budgeted year and twenty-three. The rainy day fund will be down to sixty-five thousand from a hundred and twenty. At the end of twenty twenty-two.
So and all of those, all of those budgeted line items are undesigned. Which means that they're there for emergency purposes at the top. But if any case in our, it would occur, we have money to cover. That's, that's this, that's the whole paradox, which is one hard to uh. Might be hard to understand and that's why this.
No, I, that's why the guy, I understand what you're saying, but. But the bottom line is the way this budget is currently set up, and I know it's if we spend it. And uh, our track record is if we have it, we spend it.
I would. I'd like to interject a second because you've said things that people have said no of that, or haven't said no of things. I believe there was some extreme pushback on new buildings being added in recent years. I also believe there was extreme pushback. On the purchase of a second vehicle. Chris alluded to having that vehicle possibly, but there were several members that sat up here and said that wasn't a good idea and I was one of them. Yeah. And there are also several times during our discussion. That the rainy day fund was brought up between the three of us. And my hope that we could fund the rainy day fund, George, with some of the monies that aren't used in other areas. So to say that that wasn't thought about or discussed or talked, I apologize that you weren't involved in that meeting, but those did come up. And there were times where major investments, considering a brand new building. And it had strong pushback because of the money that we were spending. I politely disagree with you that there has not been pushback because there has.
We're, you're talking apples and oranges. The, the pushback of the buildings and that never hit the budget. But I'm talking about here, the hard facts of the budget, the hard numbers of the budget. Not the high in the sky list of thirteen items here. That I told you a million two hundred thousand. Yes, some of these did not hit this budget. And that's the pushback you're alluding to. I'm talking about what hit the budget.
That hasn't been voted on yet?
That is in the twenty twenty-three budget.
It has not been, that it has not been voted yet to be appropriated. Well, we're a month away and that's what tonight in the public hearing is all about. And that's my point, that those things are being budgeted. It's a plan, it's an outline. Before those funds can be appropriated, they need to be approved by council. That's important to understand.
I totally understand.
And I also understand that. There are many different people sitting on this board. And if this budget isn't developed to be able to give them options to be able to do certain projects around the roads. Then we also may be tying their names. And I think that that should have some slight consideration as well. I understand, I understand where you're coming from on trying to keep things down. And trying to lower things and trying to do the best we can to be judicious, judicious. With the funds and be good trustees of the funds. I'm just trying to make sure it's clear that this budget is an outline. That the monies have to be approved before they are sent out the door. So to say that we're planning on spending everything, I think is a misinterpretation. Because we are also looking at the budget process as making sure if funds are needed for something. That those funds have then looked at and allocate or looked at and accounted for on how something happened.
Well, I, I fully understand what you're saying. Uh, but our, our track record here at the town is not good. On, on the spending side of events. Our expend, our expenditures, just year after year after year have escalated. If any business person had increased expenditures like this without an increase in income, which is taxes. They would be out of business. The, the year before, three years back, our increase was twenty-four, twenty-five percent in expenses. The year prior, twenty-four, sixteen, running rates uh. Uh, forty-five percent for the last couple of years. That's not sustainable. And at some point, we have to say enough is enough. Where to start, Dan? I don't know. I, I only have the macro look. At the budget. Something that I put together based on the appropriations. Based on the government reports that, that the budget reports. And the, and the comparisons are just off the charts. I didn't put the budget together, so I, I don't have the details of what we should pull up. I have big numbers that don't look good. And I guess what I'm saying is instead of trying to take your time in the, in the. Residents' time tonight, that we need to go back and take a fresh look or a harder look. At what was submitted here in that one page, which is the page, about the only page these folks can find.
But the meetings are the only ones you can go line by line. You guys cannot have a private meeting.
Well, then maybe we have another follow-up of a public hearing. That can go line by line. You know, it's going to be nine thirty. I think we have a call at ten o'clock or so. So uh, eventually we're going to run out of time.
Everybody comes.
Amber, alert.
You have to, you have to kind of look at it. You don't have specific, maybe what are we funding it on? What was?
Of course I don't. I mean, I have this. But there, this tells me nothing. It just tells me, uh, you know, engineering. Out of motor vehicle.
It tells you where, you know, where all of the budget rests.
But you know, if you're going to ask me, I, I gave you one. So let's, let's start with the sixty thousand out of the roads. Right, we have to forego, we forego.
And the other fact is we can't support the grants that we applied.
Well, if I understood when the presentation was made last month. Those, those grants are not absolutes that we're going to get them, number one. And number two, if we get them, we do not have to approve them.
Correct.
That is all right. But if the money is not in there. And council would decide that they want to do that and it was not budgeted for at this point in time, their hands are tied and they cannot move forward.
And then in January.
Just don't make that solve the problem.
And then in January, if more, if more streets were identified, if they didn't put down different streets were identified. You wouldn't be able to apply in January because you might not have enough fund.
Okay.
So then it would be another year without a road project then.
So, you know, we're going round and round and, and you asked, I suggested.
To give the pushback other than.
Fighting with joy, yeah. This is our opportunity to do it. Okay. We got the seventy-eight. We have uh. Those are the detail. Again, uh, local roads. And streets uh, has a three hundred percent increase from five thousand to twenty thousand this year. I'm sure the same issue, you know, can't do the, can't do this, can't do that. So, you know, those, those are my recommendations and, and obviously the council's not going to carry them forward, so. I don't see a need to continue wasting everybody's time here.
I think it's very valuable to, and, and uh. To be respectful of the many hours that Brett, myself, just. You have put into this budget. I think it's respectful that we have this conversation. Uh, we can do, we're doing knowledge transfer. So on your next uh, suggestion on LRS, that twenty thousand is another uh. Uh, buildup, part of the buildup for the crossroad grant for the road. So again, I think the decision to pull that out tonight is making the decision not to do road. On one of those grants, should we, should we choose to and should we brand that opportunity? I'm not, not sure that's a good target.
Well, I'm sure that everything I bring up will not be a good target. The uh. We have uh. Two hundred thousand in roads. And uh, in the capital development. We have um, fifty-five thousand in uh, rainy day. Uh, rainy day, here, here, thirty thousand in rainy day, professional services, other services. That's one I can really sink my teeth into.
The other thirty, thirty thousand, the other third, uh, for the. I mean, there's professional services was uh. Earmark should the Hughes property fail and we were, we were straightforwardly decided to. Uh, demolish the property. That is, that is the funding that is in place in order to achieve that, which was a, a community objective. To get that cleaned out. So. So, uh, I think what we heard tonight, the probability is going down, seems to be working for the plan. And if we remove the third K, then we're not, then we, we remove the ability to take action as we pull off.
Uh, last one, and I'm just gonna quit, okay? Not quickly, just put talk. Uh, rainy day, machine and equipment, twenty-five thousand.
Undesignated. If we want to move that and bring that back from available funds.
We got twenty-five out of, uh, they say we need eighty-five. Starting the right direction. Oh, great. Keep going. In motor vehicle, uh, we have engineering survey, two thousand.
Motor vehicle, I would speak to you.
By two thousand.
Engineering survey, this is, uh, this is the money set aside to evaluate a, uh, root cause and corrective actions for the flooding that is experienced at one seventy-six point eighty plus. But we don't want to, we don't want to look at what solutions we might employ there. Then I'll leave that.
Uh, twenty-five thousand in cumulative capital development, engineering surveys. Uh, twenty-five thousand.
That is for him to identify roads, um, and stuff that he can guarantee, what if I were playing at the beginning.
It's currently undesigned. Uh, some potential needs were identified as, uh, a sewer truck that engineers, uh, you know, this last play. And we also have a, on the list station, uh, failing. So it's currently undesigned, but, uh, those were two potential, uh, artists.
Why is a sewer truck in, uh, engineering survey?
Oh, this is capital.
Well, you know, I'm always given, uh, essentially that even. Yeah. But I, I need, for me, as engineering and.
I said it was undesigned. Okay, undesigned. It was just allocated, uh, to that category. Um, I would say that the attorney fees category is also undesigned as well as the professional services. Those three categories, one of those. As far as, uh, a specific project.
Well, I think it'd be helpful that if, if, uh, you have it undesigned, but yet you have an idea that you identify the idea as opposed to putting it under engineering surveys. That's, that'd be the last thing I'd think of. Well, uh, as a machinery and equipment. But truck, if we're talking about a truck, it's machinery and equipment. You know, it's just, it's, it just. Us, it's made of us here and wonder.
Well, the truck, the truck was a hundred and, sort of, machinery and equipment.
That was also. I, yeah, I scan directly.
Yeah.
Lot of numbers, like you said. Do, uh, undesigned. And that, that's in, in Brett's summary, be categorized to your calendar for all of the undesigned.
And it'd be nice if that could be included in the budget package as opposed to me sitting here fishing, uh, for items to reduce.
Well, that, that kind of goes through the process, George, what we, what we counselled. Uh, I've been, I've been focused on, on counsel with the end. Uh, to protect us from open door, we can only have two thousand persons, uh, working on the budget with just with the, with the. Uh, and the process that we go through to identify two people who are going to represent, you know, the presidents. And he has on form this year was Brent and myself. And it sounds like he would, uh, given, given this inquiry, it sounds like that he would be a good candidate for next year.
But that's fine, but the issue is this year and.
Well, let's keep going, so. Let's keep going. And I need to, let's finish the CCD though. You had, you were talking about twenty-five K.
Yeah.
Surveys. Anything else in there?
Uh, it has, uh, ten thousand professional services. I, I don't know if that's a. So that is a good, undesignated, there's ten. So we're up to fifty, sixty thousand.
I thought we, we were saying it could be open for plan commission to use, um, if they decided to go forward with the ten year.
Comprehensive.
Comprehensive, yeah.
Uh, George, George is interested in reducing. And so regardless of whether we have our ideas and targets, it's not, I'm not getting impressions. So currently these are.
That's my understanding that after we get a final budget, you can move monies, reappropriate.
No.
It's because we have a nation's spirit to do that.
You can move on within the same category, I can myself. Um, council would have to do it on, um, on a resolution. Uh, you know, you want to be careful because if some of that money is regular operating expenses, you want to make sure you're not taking away from that.
Understand. So, you know, if we do take an item out, twenty-five thousand of, of, uh, professional services with ten thousand and that need comes up for the comprehensive plan, it's going to force us to squeeze somewhere else to pull that money from another account down as we have on several occasions this past year. So it's not like, oh boy, we take it out so we can't do it. It just.
I mean, you said pull the money out from another.
Move it up, move it.
But within the same fund.
Within the same fund, yeah.
Yeah, but whatever we, whatever, whatever we completely do.
Stay, let's see.
Uh, they, uh, no, that's, that's pretty much the account.
So about the twenty-five K.
Yep. That's sixty.
And then help me keep track, are we up in rainy day?
Rainy day.
Thirty days. Uh, possible in the thirty days.
Uh, you said, uh, the twenty-five.
Okay.
I would like to pull it out. I, I think rainy day is a sacred accounting and, uh, I, I don't know the words. I don't know the legal keys, but I believe you can petition the, uh, DLGF to, uh, add to an account with their emergency. And if you use property, it would become an emergency. Let's raise the buck, either find it within our current budget or petition the, uh, DLGF.
So you actually have to put it in the paper ten days prior to a public hearing, looks like this. In order, and then put our resolution together, basically, but yeah, that's how it's done. And then you send it to DLGF and then they would have to approve it.
So, so it is doable if, if we were to take the fifty-five thousand out of rainy day. It is doable if an emergency comes up to put, get something back in through the DLGF. So I would say that, that being said, I would, uh, remove the entire fifty-five thousand and thirty and the twenty-five on a rainy day, that's fifty-five. And I would remove the the twenty-five from CCD. That's about eighty thousand. That's pretty close to getting a nine percent increase.
Your fund report on what I see engineers here today out of that one.
I wanted to pull that up. So the summary of this discussion is, um, unallocating, fifty-five K of the rainy day. And twenty-five K was, uh, CCD.
That's, that's correct.
What's the process? I wish.
Yes, with the changes, but you need to open it up to the public, but after you give the. Are you?
Council was in a group. Those changes. You're okay? I'm good, I'm okay.
Well, I'm a little nervous about the engineers because I would have no fund to pay an engineer for any work that they do, especially the five-year plan. I would have a lot, you know what I mean?
Well. So we have additional undesigned funds in CCD that would be from one category. But I don't hear your concern here because.
Well, a lot of the plan commission attorney fees come out of P P D. So you say that attorney fees in that spot were not counted for. They are, especially with the new zoning administrator who might have to lean on that attorney. Um, or any, I mean, I would say our clock, uh, with attorney fees in that fund have been high this year with the U D O changes and stuff. Um, I would hate for that new C E O, B A not be able to reach out to them at thirty. For anything that the plan commission might be working on.
So since your memory is really good.
Yeah.
Let's talk about the other categories, professional services.
Uh, the in CCD, the professional services again was, um, in base. Well, going forward with plan commissions, um, comprehensive plan. And also if plan commission or, or the zoning administrator needed to hire someone like we did just last time, for engineering services or to whatever you, you guys all approved Larry to have a spending limit now. Um, he would not be able to reach out to any, or that department would not be able to reach out to any professional services.
So like the Hughes.
Correct.
How's evaluating, the train evaluation?
Yes.
Uh, the soils type of person.
Yeah.
To evaluate drainage plans.
Correct.
Projects.
Correct.
Uh, what about, uh, machine and equipment?
Um, I thought you were going to have, uh, that could have went for a sewer truck. I didn't know if you wanted, I didn't speak on that. I don't know the issues you've had with it, but it has to wait another year, I suppose, because.
Any comments?
It's getting to the point where it's a bunch of little things that are causing problems. And we've been without it three times over the last five weeks now for over twenty-four hours. That is kind of a vital part of our super system that has everything we need on that truck. So it's very important that that truck is always ready to go. It's a two thousand and eight. It originally started out as the dump truck. It has been modified into the super truck. And it's just getting to that time.
Okay. I'm still. These are estimates. And I don't have that much of a truck. Guys intuition on truck. Uh, and there are services and, and, uh, here. If it, if it turns out to be good enough as we described, we can always bring it back in. Yeah.
No, I mean, from the note that I did, a lot of the settings to do with roads slash drainage shut for your big dollars. The rest of this stuff is, we assume that we're going to look at the comprehensive plan. We assume that truck two thousand and eight is about ready to go. Yeah, we can move money all day long, but if you're looking at big ticket items, I, I made an assumption here that this is why a lot of people are here in the audience tonight to talk about roads and, or drainage and all that stuff. Quite honestly, that's where, that's where the big dollars are. For the last couple of years, we had COVID. We didn't do a lot of roads and, I mean, if you compare it to last year's budgets, these weren't normal years in any stretch of the imagination. So you know, for, I, I applaud you guys because you two volunteered for the job. And if you had concerns, I wish you would have volunteered back and formed a committee to do this. Because I didn't want to get to this point and be looking at all this. Maybe, yes, we make assumptions. They made good assumptions. It's like property that we were looking at. If, if the town had to demolish it, that was thirty thousand dollars we're going to have to keep. I mean, yes, we're planning ahead, but as Brent said, this doesn't mean we spend the money. This is, this is being brutal with our money and saying, okay, yes, we know we got to have this, but these things might happen. This, you know, we had talked for how many years now about revisiting the comprehensive plan? I mean, this stuff's been out there. I just, I find it amazing that we get to a point here tonight. And again, this stuff's been out there since two thousand and eighteen. And I'm looking at, okay, you need these things. So it, it just bores me that I'm here right now listening for this. Yeah, I can go through and slash this. It's going to be a banner near, here, here, everybody. We are. Yeah, I can go through and slash this. It's gonna be a banner near here next year, everybody. We aren't gonna have one thing fail. How many times a week do you call? Because this vote, that vote. What you guys failed to see is the stuff that's here. And again, I'm looking back at, hey, you've seen this too. We're trying our best to plan for it. These guys did a wonderful job of planning for it. I saw the budget thing a couple of years ago, hey, when she was on here. But again, I'm for that. We're here tonight discussing nickel and dime. And I understand they had that up. And yes, we had budgets, but we also have to be realist here. We had two really weird years in every stretch of the imagination. We haven't paid or done any kind of drainage things. I get called all the time for drainage. And here. And the thing is, we're trying to plan for all that. It's not gonna get any better. These roads don't get better. We went for how many years without doing this stuff? And then we got, we got nailed with Clear Lake Co. because things took too long. Again, because of COVID and changes and everything else, we got shut out of here by the state. But we didn't slow down our spending. Again, it's 29%, 26%. You're comparing, again, you said that one order. The last two years were non-standard. Look at anything. Look at our sewer, our sewer usage. What happened all year? We blew up. How many check valves?
We waited so hard for it either.
Because of 5%? Yeah, because it's not standard. We have new pumps in there. Guess what? Yep, what's greater than Joe pumps? Guess what happened? We had a unit that actually has more gallons per minute. Everything that was in that sewer system now gets stress test. This is the stuff that these guys were planning. Because somebody comes in here last night and wants the nickel and dime. And I understand, everything adds up. I, for God's sakes, I'm a CEO. I can budget too. But I plan for the worst and hope for the best. If the money's not there, we have to jump through hoops and do, do your public notices and all that stuff and get it out there and then we'll have to explain it. But instead, we have qualified people here that made good assumptions on what's gonna happen. And then we, we sit up here and we listen to somebody last minute. Give your two cents. Give your two cents during it. You were talking about me not giving you information. If you had some idea before and everything would be 9% this year. Why didn't you talk to these? There's, we got them here.
I didn't know that the numbers were until 10 days ago.
The numbers repeat year after year. Like I said, for those of you laughing in the crowd, they do. I mean, it goes up. Has anybody looked at material costs? I mean, look at, we just approved one tonight from a month ago. But we had to increase just because of shipping costs. You don't think costs are increasing? Anybody factor any of that into this? Anybody factor into back to the 8.5% cost of consumer price index are higher right now? Did you know that everybody on, you know, AEP or major electrical thing just gave everyone their employee seven and a half? We're not open for help account. And I can sit up here and talk.
Why don't you open it up? Let's open it up. See.
We've got five minutes.
Please proceed.
They asked my opinion. I am giving my opinion.
Go on for seven minutes, Phil. And please proceed.
All right, I'm done. We have a pseudo-budget here. The next move is to enter with or without chambers.
We open up the public hearing, guys?
Hello, dialogue. And it's fair to say that I would like to make a statement that we adjust rainy days to zero.
I would agree with that.
And then I still, I still think that we have an executable budget that we would, like, yeah, CCD. So I can see the implications. So those are, those are the two things on the table. Which would adjust the appropriations.
Yes, so 25 from CCD and 55,000 from rainy day.
That's correct. Okay.
Yes.
Good discussion. So we have an ordinance, resolutions for appropriations and tax rates that's been prepared for consideration by council. And I would move to introduce that ordinance or resolution for appropriations and tax rates with the, with the stated agreement changes.
Okay. Adopted budget for the CBOG. And CCD will be changed from 369 to 0.5. Yes. So.
Grab a second.
I'll second that.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify with a same eye. At the same time, there is.
Yeah. Ordinance Resolution Number 2022-10, be ordained resolved by the town of Clear Lake. That's expenses for the Clear Lake Civil Town for the year ending December 31st, 2023. The sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of several funds herein named and for the purpose, purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of the town of Clear Lake Civil Town. The property levies and the property tax rates as herein specified are included herein. Budget form or GSB for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government, Government Finance. This ordinance and resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the town of Clear Lake. Name of adopting body, fiscal entity, town of Clear Lake. Type of adopting entity and fiscal body, town council, date of adoption, 10/18/2022. Funds, fund code 0061, rainy day. With corrections, the adopted budget is zero. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. Fund 0101, general. $468,320 for adopted budget. Adopted tax load, 176,741. Adopted tax rate, 0.0620. Income tax. Or sorry, fund code. 0254, local income tax, 66,000. Adapted levy, adapted tax levy. Zero. Adapted tax rate, zero. Fund 07 606, local road and street. Adopted budget, 20,000. Adopted levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. Fund 0708, motor vehicle highway. Adopted budget, 216,700. Adopted tax level, 1,350. Adopted tax rate, 0.0352. Fund 0720, major rivers, thorough, thorough accounts. Adopted budget, 40,000. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. Fund 0 or fund 1151, continuing education. Adopted budget, 1,000. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. Fund 2379, cumulative capital. Adopted budget, 2,000. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. Fund 2391, cumulative capital development with correction, 344,000. Adopted tax levy, 150,237. Adopted tax rate, 0.0448. Fund 2411, economic development income tax credit. Adopted budget, 40,000. Adopted tax level, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. You're correct. You're gonna correct it one time. Adopted budget, 1,198,020. Adopted tax levy, 427,331 with an adopted tax rate of 0.1420.
I would note that that adopted tax rate would change. Those will change. So having read the ordinance, resolution for appropriations, tax rates, I would move over to the public comment. I would second. This is Brian. I'll second that.
Motion and second. All those favors sticking above by saying aye.
Aye.
At the same time. So all the comment.
I have one question. Take the word for course out. When I was work and I did, got worked up the budget and I had these spreadsheets, we had count, the whole council sit down and go line by line on everything. And I wanna know why only three people were on this budget.
You did it in a public meeting like tonight, right?
No, we had, all you had to do was announce that we're having a workshop. A body happening. And every council member. I mean, I remember we sat there, every one of the council members and myself were in the meeting. And I suppose it was open, but we just lifted at the workshop.
But you and I did exactly what they did prior to that.
No.
Yeah, because you sent us a spreadsheet now.
All right.
And we went back.
But we, we all went line by line, all of the public council. We all sat down and line by line. And I remember Fasson was there and he disagreed on some things. I mean, I'm sure we, we changed numbers and, and got it done. But then, then I put it on the website. Did it on the gateway and that's how we work it out. But we didn't, it wasn't public. It was a workshop. And I don't remember if we had more than one. We had two. Just had one. I don't remember, but I checked with the state and that's what they said we can do. Just call it a workshop. And that's what we did. None of that. I haven't paid for sewer truck out of CCD.
It's a capital purchase and it can be.
But it could also be paid for us.
Yes, if the sewer pumps are there.
That's fine. Next year, have everybody have a workshop and work it all out.
Process.
Yeah, I, I mean, every, every council member should represent their board and discuss it.
I remember the first year, Roger had talked about doing a workshop and I had asked George from DLGF and he said it could get the town in trouble. If, if I'm telling you what he told me, if a resident complained that it wasn't in an open, public meeting and you're discussing budget items line by line. That's, that's Yeah.
We had workshops.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll take a look.
Okay.
That would be.
Maybe that case.
Would be a nice case.
It was nice. All in the spreadsheet and it's all itemized and I had a three-year comparison. And you could see what was coming in, what was going out, what was going in. And then you adjust the budget. And we, and we have on occasion asked for additional appropriations.
Yeah.
It's not like if you have the money, you can't spend it. It's just that you have to go through channels to get it.
Yeah.
And it's not hard.
Well, it might be difficult for a nuclear treasure.
It's not hard.
Thank you.
That's all. I'm sorry.
No, that's very valuable.
You have your end up.
Yeah, Terry Brown 1110 South. First, thank you. There's a lot of work that would end. It's evident. So thank you for that. Secondly, I appreciate the earlier in the meeting, the discussion and the transparency on performance metrics. And I know that that's a, that's a move that's been fairly recent. But well done on that. One of the suggestions might be to consider, if you go from appropriation to actual, to expect an income to income, why not have the same degree of transparency on those performance metrics that the, the public, the taxpayers can see? So that we understand, are we living within our means? Are we spending more than we're taking in? Or are we taking more than we're spending, taking more than we're spending? Either way. And then know from a decision point of view, that, that, and the decisions are grounded in data, but there's a degree of transparency in that data. And I think that's, that's some of the, that's some of the angst in the discussion. Last thing, you know, the beauty of this democracy is that you can have a robust debate. We just saw a robust debate. So well done on that.
Thanks, Eric. I'd like to second. I'm done. Sure. My little guy here, hard to get up. I know, I mean, we look for teeth to be the salt. But thank you all for your time. Sure. Cities out there, the town guard, all the stuff. That's true. Thank you so much. So if we do have a debate, it's a good majority. Thank you so much. So and we do have a separate majority. But I think George's point, my point would be. Here's the strength. We can't continue to grow thirty five or forty percent. We do. But I thank you. I don't know the waste. There's always options.
Yes. And Hilton. I would just also like to thank you for all the effort and the time. But I'd also like to see more discussion. Amongst all of you together and more sharing of the information. And the ideas that you have. I think that the information that was reported tonight. Should have been available to every member of this council. Many days before this meeting. And that would help. Stop a lot of the. Discussion that had to. Coming to.
For Schweitzer's uh he's under his condos. Uh, sorry, I love the. We we've got a very active uh sewer sewer problem over there, but um I I just first of all, I want to echo um. We've already heard from the group here about transparency. I think that's super important. Um, the one thing that came up in the conversation that touched on tonight, but um. Want to maybe come back to it, this idea of a rainy day fund. Um, I know we just we just use that to kind of get to where we wanted to be on this year's budget. But that's that's kind of the long gate, right? So I would have just encouraged the council to find every opportunity to fund the rainy day fund. Or that moment that George described, you know, maybe a downturn in the economy, it could be some other unforeseen event that causes us to be something extraordinary. So I just encourage council to continue looking at that. Thank you for your efforts.
Yeah, I need to kind of go hand out to a way um get. Bunch of processes are difficult. We've all been through them. I could talk at length about doing that. I won't. Uh, so the contention that we had tonight. Is is healthy and maybe it should have been occurred. Months ago and we had some constraints, maybe there are artificial constraints and cake and like everybody said, that was a good year. Um, so I I'm just I'm glad the discussion occurred. Um, what offer there's maybe some luxury items in there that we were. Trying to surgically remove. There's other means to get there. Everything is round numbers. And for me is an immediate red flag. Because you know their estimates. Um, finally, uh, a small item could be with the vehicle, the fixed vehicle that's going to be retired and set in the garage. Really valuable today. I suspect twenty thousand dollars of value. Maybe more. I don't know, but. It will be probably more of a bird in two years than you'll want to talk about. So get rid of the damn thing.
Yeah.
Congratulate the group in a discussion. I hope it's healthy and no hard feelings. We can continue to be. Uh, you know, valuable group together. Off now.
Look at that. Somebody started said. So my.
Um, yeah. Apple Shango um. When if when you get a grant, is it for a specific item or do you get? Can if you get a grant, can it be applied to another area?
So you're talking community crossings, perhaps? Yeah, yeah. No, it's it's project specific.
Okay, so we can't. If you get the money, take it.
Anyone else? Yes.
What's the match this year?
It's.
Max the manager's million, but what is the town have to match?
They may seventy five.
I had heard thirty, but I didn't. But I was on their website today and I saw. We have to come up with twenty fifty thousand dollars for your million dollar grant.
It was the total, uh, I think one. Almost one point four in request, so.
So five five percent.
It was like three hundred forty, so.
Of all the funds. That you have, I mean, I know that local roads and streets. Has money and um C C D has money. Economic development income tax, the um. Pointance for that says that we have to pay the dues. And you probably are going to rewrite it, right, Brett? Or that's for C C D.
Free establishment.
No, you're gonna. I thought Brett said something about changing the wording in the C C D. Or the economic development.
Yes, yes.
That's really.
That's I'm yeah, that's there's been talk about it.
Very word that, but so whatever you don't spend for the dues. That you pay. The bank tell me. Not development. That can be used for both. That's the way it was set up when I was there. In mind. So instead of forty thousand, you put thirty eight. So there's there's money there for us.
Yeah, um, you know, nine three six south. Um, I want to thank Jessica for spitting two hours.
Yeah.
I get it slow. The numbers. So I appreciate those in the budgeting process and finding system. Um, and I'm sure I could have sat there for four hours and thought with loving born.
You want to have a good time.
Yeah, it was accidental. But my question is on these grant applications. Um, there's there are numbers there. There are examples. How are those numbers alive at? And what are the details behind them? Because I think that's what the public wants to know. We're going to spend a million dollars. And looking here in rain. You need to know what the specifics are. Are we getting value for that money? Is it being put in the best place around the lake? I mean, I walk around. You guys know me. I walk around lakes almost every day for six years. In all kinds of weather. And I know where the worst flooding areas are. And the ones that we're talking about are not the worst ones. With the exception of one seventy five west. If you went. The rainstorm we had the other night, we went around the leg, there would you see flooding? And we take those pictures and we took the same picture. We're going to see it at one seventy five west. And it's going to be right where those garages are and it's all again. I have never once walked through flooded water across the road at twenty five west. Six years, we've all been around the lane every day. I've never saw flooding across the road at twenty five west. But it's always at one seventy five.
Almost. Right now. I love it. Twenty two west. They're like in the floods there. If we get a really bad storm, I've I've been in the water to my knees.
On the road?
Yep. At twenty two west, they're like.
There's.
Sure have.
There's there's multiple places about, and I'll tell you. This is going back to the infrastructure. Dan and I have been working on same reason we want the G I F. I think everybody here wants the same thing. We have drainage problem. You go back and history and try to figure out who was wrong, who did what wrong, all that, but. You know. Half of us are probably three quarters of us are on the conservancy. We want the water that comes into Clear Lake clean. The only way to do that is to take ownership of everything that comes in clearly. I'm not talking here at East Spouse or something like that, but anything that gets directed towards the way. We should have. You know, because I've got it down there at seven fifty, you know. Small area down there. We don't own it. The only time that I could touch it was when the water went across the road. Now it becomes a safe. Now I can say it. It was a safety issue and we had to do it. How many times did we do it? Now you have just in the last couple of weeks, whether we conservancy do and back property. That's there behind twenty two and twenty four. Cleaned all that out, directed what more water towards that. Pipe that doesn't work anymore. Because the pipe was crushed. So if you didn't see water.
Who's crushed the pipe?
Who crushed the pipe?
Pipe. Whoever crushed the pipe is responsible for repairing. It's not the town.
Wow. Yes and no. Here's here's where you're going to get an argument from me. Conservancy. What did I say? I just did. They directed more water towards those residents. Why is it their responsibility to take care of it? Because what they had in there wasn't going to handle what the conservancy.
They're fixing that.
No, they just put more water into it, but this was part of it.
They're fixing it right now. You go back and look at the grading, the doing that there right now. Maybe equipment.
Yeah, where's.
They're actually making like it looks like a retention.
It's right.
They're trying. There's all they're trying to get the settlement off the water.
The water is still the water. The the amount of water coming to that ditch that already flooded. Is going to be, I don't know, because I haven't seen it. But it's going to be a lot greater than what it has been and it's been flooding. Right now. And again, Bob, this this is the thing. If it's coming into the lake, we need to take ownership of it, make sure that. We get the clean water to there. That's why when I talked to Bridget about the whole thing, I mean. When they burn off that whole thing, they set water down to every one of those residents' house and they have mud to like the projects. When I tell her, I said, cut a ditch and take it down to again that ditch. So everything from that whole back conservancy area all the way over to Scotty Road is coming to the lake stand. So why is the what? No, this is my point. So why is it that residence? Responsibility for everybody else's property shoving water at her. This is the reason why the plant commission had to put a drainage portion into the I O P stock. Because people were building bigger and bigger houses, ready for what is back their water flow. Where does it go? Right into the road.
And the E D O says you can't drain water onto somebody else's property. That's the resident's responsibility to fix that.
But it hasn't been enforced. Very well. Because I.
I'm enforced in my area.
Again, this all goes back to an inconsistent process, which is what we all are trying to do. It's get some.
My point there and there's a difference between what nature causes and what people cause. And if a resident causes the flooding issue, which the residents' responsibility is to pay to fix it, not the town.
I agree with that. But the rest of that.
So the conservancy is pushing more water towards my house.
Right.
And it's my fault to fix it?
If the conservancy is responsible to fix it, not their lake, not the town, we wouldn't pay for that. If the service he created the problem, if they did, they should fix it.
Again, you can you can say this on any one of our drainage problems.
If you drain water across the road on my lot, it should be responsible to fix that. Not the town.
But but again.
You have to look at your face like data basis.
Right.
You can't just make a broad brush comment. To that effect. Circumstances that. In every case.
That's why we need the details of what's behind these grant applications. What are we actually going to spend money on? Are we fixing problems that residents caused themselves? Or are we fixing something that nature caused?
That's a different thing. If I created drainage problem for my neighbor, it's my responsibility to fix it, not their lake, not not to community.
There's currently about that for U D O is that the drugs water flow off your property, the driveway is the storm water. Yeah, flooding and uh. You know, maybe the first thing we need to do is is look at. At the uh water the residents are sending down the roads. Uh, first, and that may.
We just talked tonight.
Yeah.
You didn't drive the door across some west lake. In the last.
Rock.
There in the last two years, um. You have any data that problem. Uh, we require drainage plans to be.
Yep.
Prepared and approved and permitted. If if there's water going down the road from the house, it's predate.
What about all the new garages that were built on seventy five west? With the driveways, other ramp, where's that water go?
Right.
Right across the road. Right into somebody's lot.
Yeah.
It might be their lot or it might be the neighbor's lot. We were told that we had to put a downspouse underground with a drain that goes under the road, hooks to the main system drain and it goes into there. Nobody came and dried my lot off. I mean, I spent ten thousand dollars drawing it for the seven, so I should have brought. I didn't ask the county to pay for it.
Bob, did you and your neighbors in that area also put in catch basins to? Move the water off your driveway?
We were well, we were told by the town. That our responsibility to put the drain in there and keep the water off the road, and that's what we did. I put two in and Danny Kaiser put money. And Danny just put business last year when he built, he bought a lot. He hadn't built his garage. But when he builds that garage, our water's got to go somewhere. And if we don't drain it, it's going to come across the road. Right into his driveway, right into his garage. So you put it raining, so that won't happen. Garden. And we need details in behind what hell that money's going to be spent and what's involved in the in the drainage issue. Because if you're talking about draining individual resident blocks to keep water off the road, that's the resident's responsibility, not the town.
Agreed.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely.
You know, we'll make a broad brush. Because. There are times where we do need to look at safety concerns and where we've got roads flooded. I have personally myself pulled a dozen vehicles off of seven hundred when I worked at Marina.
Oh, I don't know where that.
So if hang on, let me get a chance to talk. So if we as a community can't look at something in a situation like that and know that something needs to be addressed, we're shooting ourselves in the foot. We really are shooting ourselves in the foot because it be it could be a multitude of factors that are causing some of that flooding. It could be. Mother nature. In combination with the new garage, in combination with something a farmer or the conservancy has done that has added to that. So I just want to say that when we have standing water on the road as a town, we need to look at it.
You're talking about seven hundred, County Road seven hundred in front of the Marina?
And it's still.
That's the county's responsibility. It's a county road. It's not our responsibility.
I'm using it as an example of standing water on the road where it's a safety concern because I've literally pulled vehicles out of that room. I've literally pulled vehicles out of it, and if she's saying that she's standing and need deep water. There's an issue. And there's a car that's going to get stuck. Or there's a golf cart that could get stuck, or there's unknown vehicles that could get stuck if it's behind water.
It's been with Brett for. Ever since I've been thirty five years, if we get a heavy rain, it always floods to the. Right in front of the marinas. Um, and they, you know, the county puts up the roadblocks and all that. We can't use the road. We have to go over here. Spend that one.
Yeah, that wasn't the best example. Should.
Yeah.
But should one of the. Roads within the town of Clear Lake low and multiple vehicles get stuck or the opportunity to be stuck. We should look at this.
I agree with the work. I agree with them.
You know, from my priority standpoint, uh. Guy, the only road that you've ever complained to me about water. And in the winter ice. Was at one seventy six. And last year, I think I've gotten to to coordinate off several times because you couldn't even get the problem through the truck. Through the ice and and throw frozen water. Uh, I drive past your house. Multiple times a day. I've never encountered. The situation. I'm I'm sorry for it, but I've just personally two or three times a day, I've I've never seen it rain or shine. He's going to explode there on at least two of these. One of which was in the middle of the moon.
So is the conservancy doing something to alleviate that problem?
Uh, the conservancy is actually their product is to increase the uh horizontal velocity. So that it doesn't flood the other county road behind. Now. So they're they're wanting to discharge the water quicker. And we did, then it goes in clearly.
So all three.
And. They get they get the discharge from the property to the north. Of the road there. So it's all, we're all connected. Okay.
I only argue that's the beauty of the watershed. If you create the problem or make the problem worse, it's your responsibility to fix it. No, not that.
I think it's it's a it's a significant wire issue with. We need to be prudent. We need to challenge it. Uh, I think that's all healthy, but at the end of the day, to think that. Um. Um. That that a drainage issue persists is because we're not willing to participate in the solution. Will, we will be participating in accelerated road damages that cost us money, et cetera. So it's, it's, I think I explained this to George in one of our one on ones. Uh, I think you read the one in each situation in a unique sense, challenge it and see if we can collaborate on the solution that's best for everybody. And uh. That's my belief. Uh, your question about the estimates, basis estimates for the roads, those are prepared by deals. Uh, so experience and knowledge of road.
But the town council, the council, the council votes on the detailed plan, or they just.
And when, and when, when they come to council for approval. Um, all the details will be provided. Yeah.
At least share those when they're making the presentations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The other questions? Comments? I'm going to take my close.
Oh, close bubble comment.
George, I'll second. A motion and a second, all of them favor, signify the same, I.
I.
On the same time.
So that completed the first reading of the ordinance or resolution for appropriation and tax rates. I move to suspend the rules of order, allowing for a second reading by title law.
I have a motion, George, in a second.
George, I'll second.
Motion and a second, all of them favor, signify the same, I.
I.
Same time, motion carries.
Uh, ordinance or resolution for appropriations and tax rates. This completes the second public reading of ordinance or resolution for appropriations and tax rates. I move to pass and adopt the ordinance or resolution for appropriations and tax rates. Uh, with the uh, as read corrections.
You're not, you're not adopting it, you're not, you know, to the adoption hearing, which is October eighteen.
I will strike a motion and restate, I move to pass the ordinance or resolution for appropriations and tax rates. Uh, as as uh, with the corrections as read um, to the adoption, to the adoption base.
I have a motion, George, in a second. On a second, all of them favor, signify the same, I.
I.
On the same time, motion carries. Item number eight, ready and reviewed.
This one. Or is that?
I don't know, general discussion, anything else?
I just thank you all for the robust discussion.
Anything from the audience?
Thank you, yeah. Thank you again, very, very new, not easy.
All right, anything else to come before the month? Not a dinner, can you move into adjourn?
Move into the.
George, I'll second. All of them favor, signify the same, I.
I, I think you are.
Go forward to Brian. You guys. You don't need to. I need to slow it rate. You don't, I don't. Yes, I have the idea, I have the. I will just. I'll get down during.